Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the school committee meeting to order. I have 5:31. Could we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Kathy Patnood.
Here.
Dave Florio.
Here.
Luke Murray.
Here.
Donna Colonian.
Yeah.
James Pearson.
Here.
Craig Levis.
Here.
Don Coward.
We see.
Here. I'm here.
All right. Is there a motion to recess into executive session?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to recess into executive session.
I second the motion.
And could we have a roll call on that, please?
Kathy Patnood.
Yes.
Dave Florio.
Yes.
Luke Murray.
Yes.
Donna Colonian.
Yes.
James Pearson.
Hi.
All right. We're going to say goodbye to our open session and go into executive session. I assume everyone knows and has the link for that. That being said, I'll meet you in executive session and we will be back in session with the public at 6 o'clock. Thank you so much. Yeah. All right. I'd like to reconvene the open session of the Coventry School Committee. The committee met in executive session for about 15 minutes. We considered homeschooling requests and
Minutes.
From our executive session. And both, we took two votes. Yes. And both of them, both motions carried 5 to 0. I'd like to have a moment of silence while we can do the work before us this evening. Thank you. And if Mrs. Colonian could read the mission statement for Coventry Public Schools. Thank you.
The mission of Coventry Public Schools is to inspire, support, and challenge all students in an inclusive community to be critical thinkers, effective communicators, reflective learners, responsible individuals, and global citizens.
Thank you. I already did the executive session report. So is there a motion from the committee to seal the records of the executive session?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve the minutes of the, to, that the records of the executive session be kept closed pursuant to sections 42-46-4 and 42-46-5.
I second the motion.
Can we have a roll call, please?
Kathy Patnood.
Yes.
Dave Florio.
Yes.
Luke Murray.
Yes.
Donna Colonian.
Yes.
James Pearson.
Yes.
Thank you. The motion carries 5 to 0. Moving on to the consent agenda, approval of minutes. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I vote, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented slash amended.
I second the motion.
Any questions from the committee? Seeing none on paper.
Hi.
This is, if you could do a motion.
Yes.
A roll call.
Yes. Kathy Patnood.
Yes.
Dave Florio.
Yes.
Luke Murray.
Yes.
Donna Colonian.
Yes.
James Pearson.
Yes.
Thank you. The motion carries 5 to 0. Moving on to the public agenda, the following agenda items are open for discussion from the public. If a motion is made before I call for the vote, we will allow discussion from the citizens attending. That being said, we're going to move on to our first agenda item, which is number six, the CCAP Summer Internship Presentation by Catherine and Noah Aldana. Did you want to start this?
Yes. Yes. I, I, I'm just very excited to briefly introduce Catherine Aldana and Noah Aldana. They're two, one of our incredible students. Catherine goes to the high school and Noah, you're going to the high school this year also, correct? Yes. Noah was eighth grade last year. So just quickly how this came about, Comprehensive Community Action Program, CCAP, which we partner with, provide a lot of supports. They also do a lot of summer youth programs. And one of them is this internship program where they offer opportunities for, for young adults to do different types of internships in different organizations. Two years ago, Catherine approached me with her mom, Amanda, who's an incredible advocate for our schools, works in our schools. And they asked me about doing an internship. And so I thought, you know, it was a great opportunity. Catherine and I worked together. Catherine did some different projects for me. She also spent some time working in our preschool in an extended school year. So this year they approached, because of virtual and what's going on, we kind of brainstormed and we came up with, I think is a great project. And so having said that, I'm going to let them do their presentation and then obviously take any questions. So the project they did though is really going to benefit our, our students and our educators, I think, moving forward. So take it away, Noah and Catherine.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Levis. I'm just pulling up the slides now. Actually, I think Noah's pulling them up to presentate them.
There we go.
Okay. Can everybody see this?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, then.
So this is our Read Aloud project. So last year, my mom told me about the program called CCAP. And CCAP stands for Comprehensive Community Action Program. CCAP offers summer employment for young adults ages 14 to 23. CCAP prepares you for your future. They teach you how to write a resume, thank you letters, and much more. CCAP offers you places to work or you can find your, a job yourself. I decided to reach out to Mr. Levis to see if I might be able to work for him in the summer. I thought it could be a very fun learning experience about how Coventry School runs. Thankfully, Mr. Levis said yes, and working for him last year and this year was an amazing experience.
Did you read that last statement there, Catherine?
Well, um.
I'm only kidding. Sorry.
Oh, okay.
I entered the CCAP program because I heard about it from my sister. She said Mr. Levis was the best boss ever and she was excited to work for him. I then thought about the CCAP program and how working for Mr. Levis could be beneficial and fun. Mr. Levis and I met and we went over my interests. And I was going to work with the IT department. The COVID-19 pandemic started and we had to change plans. With the help from Mr. Levis, we developed an online Read Aloud program. I helped develop instructions on how to create online reading materials. This still allowed me to work with computers, which was my goal.
My original work plan was to work on small tasks such as organizing paperwork and helping out where I was needed. Noah was supposed to work in the IT department. However, however, COVID-19 emerged and we were in the middle of a global pandemic and plans had to be changed. Mr. Levis hadn't had a idea to make Read Alouds for elementary school kids. We took that idea and as Mr. Levis said, we ran with it. We ended up working with the library to get books from pre-K to fifth grade. However, we could not go through the library and choose our books because of COVID-19. So we worked with the children's department and they chose a selection of books for us to pick through. We did this every week so that we could get new books for the next grade. Noah and I would get two grades at a time so we could divide and conquer the books.
We used Google Drive to sort all of our videos. When I created them, I organized them so that pre-K would be on the top and fifth grade would be on the bottom. On the very bottom are the folders that I filled the tutorials in so that teachers can create Read Alouds the same way that my sister and I did. On the first day Catherine and I started working for Mr. Levis, he gave us some ideas on how to create the Read Alouds. We used our format in which we took pictures of each page and read the books as a type of voiceover. We had to do some research on how to edit them and we settled around using WeVideo. The pictures were always put here to be used in the video. The video timeline was here. We used the timeline to edit the videos. The video preview was displayed here. Fun fact, each video took about 45 minutes to create. We have a three-step tutorial on how to make our Read Alouds. Step one includes the setup in Google Drive. Step two includes the editing process. And step three teaches you how to upload your finished video.
So here's one of our examples of the books we found for you guys to watch.
I think we're having some difficulty with the audio, right?
Yeah. I'm not sure what's happening, but it's going a little slower than normal for some reason.
Yeah. Sharing audio and video on, on something like this doesn't really work out too well.
That would explain it.
Forgot the audio to work the last time we tried it.
Yeah.
So you want to describe a little bit of what they, what we couldn't hear?
Yeah. So we were just, um, we read the books out loud and it had an audio of us reading the book. So then each picture, it would stand for a certain amount of time with us reading the, reading the book and it would stay for that amount of time. And that would be us reading the book and it would transition to the next page until it was finished.
And you, you want to talk about just quickly how many books you did per grade level?
We did about two to three books for each grade. Except for fifth grade. Fifth grade, we did one book and it was a chapter book.
Thank you, everybody, for your time. If you have any questions regarding CCAP plus now, we also want to give a special thank you to Mr. Levis and CCAP for this fantastic opportunity.
So we, just, we're going to make the books available to our, our teachers and tutorial. And we know that we have many people that probably have a lot of expertise in this, but I, I, I think it's a great resource and I want to thank you too for just, you know, taking a situation that, you know, we had a plan, we couldn't implement the plan and just to brainstorm and the key was your willingness. And so, you know, we'll make sure we share this with all of our, our educators. So I just wanted to thank you guys very much and very proud of what you did.
Thank you, Mr. Levis.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, so I'm just going to ask the other school committee members to ask any questions or make any comments. So I'm going to start with Mr. Pearson. Did you have anything you'd like to ask or any comment?
No, this is a great program. So it's, it's nice to see someone who's able to take advantage of this. And, and more impressive is, is being able to do this during the restrictions we have because of COVID. So, so terrific job. I, I hope it was a valuable learning experience and we look forward to both of you having success in school and then joining the workforce someday and, and taking some of these experiences with you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think it's a great program also and I, you guys did a wonderful job. And just the simple fact that you were so flexible when what you had planned didn't work out, you didn't get frustrated, you didn't, you know, give up, you turned around, made a negative into a positive. And, you know, going out in the workplace, that's what they look for. They look for self-starters, they look for people that just want to, they're just flexible, they're able to do anything. And I think you guys both did that. So congratulations, you did a wonderful job and good luck in your future.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Colonian. Mr. Murray.
Like, remember Colonian said, I think one of the most impressive things is that you stayed dynamic and you could have given up when COVID hit and things kind of went sideways, but you didn't. You kept moving, moving forward. You, you made this into a positive and you clearly spent a lot of time on it because doing the calculations on 45 minutes per video times the amount of grades and the amount of storybooks you read, you're probably done with writing, reading storybooks for a while. So thank you very much for your efforts. I'm sure it'll be appreciated by the teachers in the entire district and great job.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
And finally, Mr. Florio.
Catherine and Noah, do I know you from St. Vincent de Paul?
Yes.
Yes, you do.
I thought so. I thought so. You are great kid. Miss, Madam Chair, these are great kids. They, they are amazing. They are absolutely amazing and I had no idea you were doing this. Absolutely fantastic. And you had, Madam Chair, these are the best kids that I've, that I've, that I've worked with. I mean, they, they, they are good, good kids and your parents must be so proud. They must be so proud Catherine and Noah. They have to be. And I've known them since they were small. Remember, I've known you since you were small now. And now look at you. You're doing fantastic work. And I wish you the best. And thank you so much for helping our community. And thank you, Mr. Levis, for helping these two exceptional children. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
See you soon.
Well, I, I, I don't think I can say anything more than my fellow school committee members have already stated, except to say thank you so much. I really enjoyed your presentation. You're so, I feel it and it must have been a wonderful experience. I have one question. Did you have to learn the software, the video editing? I know, I forget what it was called, but.
WeVideo.
How difficult was that?
It was not difficult. I used it before in the past. So because of that, I was able to teach it to my sister and then we were able to apply my prior knowledge into the videos we were creating.
And it really isn't hard to learn. It's pretty basic and even has like a trial of how it, it shows you what to do in the beginning and then you know what to do from now on.
Well, you guys did an awesome job and I'm sure the teachers in the district will really appreciate your work. If you have something, you know, that you can show for what you did is just wonderful. So again, I thank you and I thank you, Mr. Levis, for helping them and, you know, being your mentor. Are there any piano, are there any attendees that would like to add anything or any panelists that I haven't called on yet? Looks like I see four raised hands. Mr. Murphy.
Yes, we have four. I'll bring the first person in. First person up is Susan Mills. Your mic is muted. If you could unmute and just state your name and address for the record. Susan, if you unmute your mic, you can get in. Okay. We'll move on to the next person. This is just a number. It's 448003. If you unmute, you should be able to speak now. Please say your name and address for the record. Okay. We'll go to the third person. This is Sandra Restall. If you could just state your name and address for the record. You'll have to unmute your mic.
Okay. This is Sandra Restall. I didn't plan to make a comment. I'm sorry. I guess we put, clicked on something wrong, but I'm not making any comments. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. And then the last hand is Amanda. Amanda, if you could unmute your mic and state your full name for the record along with your address.
Hi, this is Amanda Aldana and my address is 521 Reed Schoolhouse Road. And I was just coming on to thank Mr. Levis for this opportunity for both Catherine and Noah and for all of you for letting them present. They worked really hard on this and did a really good job, guys. And I just wanted to thank you guys all for giving them that opportunity.
Thank you. Anything else from the committee? And thank you so much again for presenting to the committee and being brave enough to do this because it's always a little, I'm sure, a little frightening. So you guys did an awesome job. Thank you again so much. So I guess we can move on to item number seven, which is the recall. Mr. Levis, did you want to speak to this?
Yes. This is a position that we're able to, individually able to recall due to the person that had the position going out on a, requesting a leave. So we're able to recall this individual to the point four French position.
Thank you. Is, is there a motion to approve?
Oh, Madam Chair, I'm just getting to the air. Okay. Here we go. Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve Ionia Andrew Polio. Point oh four, point oh four, oh point four, French teacher at Coventry High School for the 2020, 2021 school year, retroactive, eight thirty-one, 2020.
I second the motion.
Any questions from the committee? I don't think there's any questions from the attendees. Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Catherine Patnood.
Yes.
Dave Florio.
Yes.
Luke Murray.
Yes.
Donna Colonian.
Yes.
James Pearson.
Hi.
Thank you. The motion carries 5 to 0. Moving on to the item numbers, number eight, the revised 2020, 2021 Governor's School Calendar. It was our reference number three in our packet. Mr. Levis, did you want to speak to this?
Chair, I'm going to ask, I'd ask Mr. Murray if he could pull that up. And basically like we did last time, the governor put out a calendar. You may, Mr. Murphy. I'm sorry. I apologize, Mr. Murray. Mr. Murphy. So we took the state calendar, the, the governor's calendar and aligned it. And again, the calendar was for students and it included the beginning of the, start of the school year, professional development for staff. So we aligned that to our calendar. And you can talk, you know, in terms of the requirements, what the governor had put forward. The only changes were in terms of there were two holidays which we, religious holidays, which we did not take just as a last time. Obviously, any individual in our district that practices that faith and takes those holidays, they're entitled to that. So it's, it's pretty self-explanatory. And this, this calendar won't, doesn't change depending on whatever plan or whatever phase we're in. The calendar still stays the same. You'll also notice that there's no need for snow days. Well, I guess it's not obvious, but the governor did talk about, and the commissioner, that based on distance learning and what we've been able to implement, you know, very unlikely that we'll need to have snow days. So. Whereas, you know, in the past, we've had different times out of, out of work, out of school and we've had to come back and revise the calendar. That should not be an issue this year.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Levis. Are there any questions from any other school committee members? Hearing none. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve the revised 2020, 2021 Governor's School Year Calendar as presented slash amended.
I second the motion.
And before I call for the vote, are there any questions from the attendees here on the call tonight?
There are no hands raised at the time.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes. Kathy Patnood.
Yes.
Dave Florio.
Yes.
Luke Murray.
Yes.
Donna Colonian.
Yes.
James Pearson.
Yes.
Motion carries 5 to 0. Thank you. Moving on to number nine, the Distance Learning Policy, our second reading, discussion, and vote. It was our reference number four. Are there any comments from Mr. Levis and/or Mr. Pearson? Who was our policy school committee member?
Nothing further to add in addition to what we discussed last time.
Thank you, Mr. Pearson. So are we ready to dispense with the second reading of the Distance Learning Policy?
Kathy?
Yes.
I'm sorry. I just wanted to ask Mr. Levis a question.
Sure.
I just, on the, well, this might be for both Mr. Pearson and Mr. Levis. On the planned components and educator responsibilities, the one thing I didn't see, and maybe this is addressed elsewhere, but is on, just basically social, emotional, or creation of opportunities for teamwork and collaboration. I looked at the Distance Learning Plan and just on a, on a broader aspect of creating a framework for, we have a lot on the, sort of the nuts and bolts guidance on instruction and learning and, and what the school's role is. But, you know, what distance learning, what we're hearing from a lot of parents is suddenly the gaps in education where the, the students are not getting some of the, the other interaction, you know, even just getting to see their teachers on a, on a physical basis. And you just, you know, is that something that we should be integrating this? I don't know. I just didn't see anything addressing that yet.
I'm going to, in terms of like mentioning the social emotional, most definitely, we've continued to make that a priority. There were some components of this that we took out that relate more to operations, but I'll, I'll let, you know, Mr. Coward, if you want to jump in and address that. But those are, those are valid concerns. I mean, but we, we definitely plan on addressing that. But in terms of the policy itself, I'll defer to Mr. Coward.
Yeah. We're looking to address it in a few different places. The Distance Learning Policy, the way we wrote it was that the, the top section of the policy was really the school committee giving direction to the school department to build out plans. The bottom section of that plan where you look at the, the expectations and whatnot are really sort of like a draft of what that would look like. So we can add more to that at any point. It was just to kind of build, build a starting point. In the Distance Learning Plan, but also in our building plans, we specifically tried to address social, emotional learning in a few different places. And then in the District Reentry Plan, the one that went to the state, there was an entire section on social, emotional learning and how it's going to be addressed by the district and then also at the building level. So it, it, it shows up in a few different places. In the policy itself, it was just kind of not necessarily called out to a deep dive. It was more about In the policy itself, it was just kind of not necessarily called out to a deep dive. It was more about getting some ideas down so people could see when the district is building plans like this, these are the kinds of things that we'd like to include. But that's not like a list that can't be altered, changed, the expectation, the accountability, all of that can be built on and off of.
You're muted, Luke.
That'll happen at least once or twice tonight. Yeah, I think just, I understand it's a broad policy. I'm just making sure that, you know, just from a top-down school committee priority perspective, obviously, the policy sets the framework, right?
Correct.
And then you're taking it to a nuts and bolts level. I just, the only concern I have is just because this is a second reading, right? This is going forward. Is that that's something that we're putting forth, the saying that this is a priority, right? That goes into our vision plan, our strategic vision.
Yes.
And social emotional, and one of the, again, what I keep hearing from parents is one of the main reasons they want in-person learning is that missing a lot of that interaction. So if there's any way that we can accommodate that, whether we're doing it through policy tonight or integrating to that plan, I'm just expressing my concern. Thank you.
Thank you, Luke. Any other questions from the committee? Before I call the vote? I do, I do think we had a, did we have a first and a second, or do we, do we need to read the motion again?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to dispense with the second reading of the distance learning policy.
I second the motion. Roll call, please.
Kathy Patnade?
Yes.
Dave Florio?
Yes.
Luke Murray?
Yes.
Donna Colonian?
Yes.
James Pearson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Moving on to the motion to approve the policy as presented. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve the distance learning policy as presented slash amended.
I second the motion. Any further questions from the committee?
Madam Chair, I just want to, I just want to reiterate that we all are concerned with the social and emotional needs of every children in the Coventry school system.
Right, that's a good point. Thank you, Mr. Florio. Anything from the public?
We do have one hand raised.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy.
Kristin, you have free to speak if you could to state your name and your address for the record. You'll have to unmute your mic.
I'm listening to his father right now. Actually, I can't hear anything. I'm not aware of others. Yeah, I'm sorry. This just started and I gotta listen to it.
Kristin, we can hear you.
Worry. Oh, I love you too. Thank you for taking.
Okay, we're gonna move to the next person. This is Michelle. Michelle, if you could state your name and address for the record and unmute your mic. It looks like she changed her mind. Next is Karen. Karen, if you could state your name and address for the record and unmute your mic.
Thank you. This is Karen Delone, 20 Regalwood Drive in Coventry. So on the distance learning plan that I read, I did not see anything mentioned about the career and tech program. Only on the high school section, it mentioned that it would note career and tech, but then no details on it.
Excuse me, this is Delone. We're not talking about the plan. We're talking about a policy about distance learning. We will discuss the plan later on in during the meeting, so we can hear your questions at that point. Okay?
Okay, so my apologies. That wasn't about the document that just was sent out over the weekend?
No, no.
Okay, my apologies. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Is that it, Mr. Murphy?
It looks like it's it, yes.
All right, thank you, Mr. Murphy. So could we have a roll call vote, please?
Kathy Patnade?
Yes.
Dave Florio?
Yes.
Luke Murray?
Yes.
Donna Colonian?
Yes.
James Pearson?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries five to zero. Moving on to our second policy of the evening. Student entry into a facility during a public health crisis, a first reading. Mr. Levis, did you want to speak to this?
I'm gonna ask Mr. Murphy if he can pull this up. And now again, I want to thank Mr. Pearson, Dr. Dixon. Been doing a lot of policy work, meeting every week. We had one scheduled, but we, I need to reschedule another one based on tonight's meeting. But I also want to thank the nurses. We had spent a lot of time on our reentry policy. Received a lot of feedback and including the nurses. So we kind of started from scratch. We sent it back. There was different guidance coming out, CDC guidance was changing, Department of Health. And the nurses as a whole spent a lot of time and really helped us focus on the purpose of the policy. I think, you know, as Mr. Murray has said and Mr. Pearson about policy, really, you know, we focus on the purpose and the philosophy, and it really is the school committee directing the school department administration to take on certain roles or responsibility. So again, I want to thank, this is a student entry into into a facility during a public health crisis. It's a very brief policy, very specific, and it says exactly what the school department needs to be doing in terms of students entering into a facility. The second policy we'll talk about will be staff and visitors. But I think the policy speaks for itself, but I'll turn it over to Mr. Pearson if you want to add to this.
No, nothing to add at this time.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from committee members on this first reading of the student entry? Seeing or hearing none, is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to dispense with the first reading of the student entry into facility during a public health crisis policy.
I second the motion. And before I call for the vote, are there any attendees that would like to comment on this?
There are no hands.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy.
I'm sorry, actually, someone just raised their hand.
Okay, thank you.
Kristin, you are free to speak if you could state your name and address for the record and unmute your mic.
Yes, this is Kristin Denuces. I'm at ninety-seven Bramble Bush Road. And I was just hoping you could give us like a quick overview of what the policy states.
Okay, I do believe this will be on the website tomorrow.
It's on the website, I believe. It's.
Already on the website.
Yes, these are already posted.
Did you want me to read? I mean, it's a brief policy. I can, I can go through it. Again, the policy sets what the the school department is responsible for, and then the protocols are what we'll be implementing at the building level.
If they're posted, that's fine. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Kristin.
Thanks, Kristin.
All right, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Kathy Patnade?
Yes.
Dave Florio?
Yes.
Luke Murray?
Yes.
Donna Colonian?
Yes.
James Pearson?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries five to zero. And I would like to reiterate that this was just our first reading. So it will come back before the school committee for any additional questions from the public. Sorry about that. So moving on to our third policy, first reading on employee and visitor entry into a facility during a public health crisis policy, number eleven. Levis, did you want to speak to this in any way, or Mr. Pearson?
I'm gonna ask Mr. Murphy to please put it up on the screen. And can you scroll down a little bit? There you go, thanks. So again, it follows the same format. The body of the policy, I'm gonna read just the Coventry Public Schools. I need to fix that typo in the capital S, but will follow current center for disease control and prevention, CDC and Rhode Island Department of Health guidance, the development of specific procedures related to illness in school attendance for employees and visitors. Specific guidelines and procedures will be approved by the school physician and the certified school nurse teachers. These specific guidelines and procedures will be updated appropriately as the health crisis evolves and will be readily available for parents, staff and community members to review on the Coventry Public Schools website. Printed copies will be posted outside the main entrances to the facility. So that basically is the body of the policy.
Thank you, Mr. Levis. Are there any questions from the school committee before I ask for a motion?
Madam Chair?
Yeah.
I'll just make a comment quick, just for, because I know we have a lot of community members on, is that just reminder that this is a broad policy. It's a framework for the administration to craft something much more specific at the building level. So, you know, when you're looking at this and it's very broad, it's meant to be very broad. So that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. So could I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to dispense with the first reading of the employee and visitor entry into a facility during a public health crisis policy.
I second the motion. Thank you. Are there any questions from the attendees gathered? I don't see any, Mr. Murphy. So I'm gonna ask, I'm gonna ask for a roll call vote, please.
Kathy Patnade?
Yes.
Dave Florio?
Yes.
Luke Murray?
Yes.
Donna Colonian?
Yes.
James Pearson?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries five to zero. Okay, moving on to agenda item number twelve. Coventry Public Schools air quality update discussion, which was our reference seven. Mr. Levis, I'm sure you want to speak to this.
Yes, I'm gonna speak to it. I don't, I mean, I'm sure there may be a lot of questions, but I don't have a lengthy presentation. I did share a document. It's reference number seven. It was an email from Anna Riley inviting all stakeholders to a presentation that was attended by, I think, the commissioner, Dr. Alexander Scott, and also Dr. Bromage. Just for, and for the record, I had reached out to Dr. Bromage immediately after his presentation at the elementary school in Providence. And, you know, I'm sure he's inundated. I didn't hear back. You know, again, I've stated this frequently. I was very concerned after that. We did attend the school business authority, building authority, I'm sorry, held a presentation. And again, it was reiterated, it was Fielding International, I think, that presented. They had actually worked with a consultant that is the Creative Environment Corporation that did a portion of the panel discussion presentation solely on air quality. And right after that, you know, we, I indicated several times at the school committee that I wanted to bring a third party. You know, Joe De Silva, who's head of the school, works for RIDE, but head of the school building authority, had indicated to all present that he recommended, strongly recommended that we get a third-party consultant to look at air quality. So I'm happy to say that, thank you A for approving the funding, at least the one million seventy-seven thousand dollars. But we're able to secure actually the same consultant that presented at Fielding Institute. I'm sorry, Fielding International that presented in. She, we were able to work out an arrangement with her late last Thursday evening. Friday afternoon, I was able to speak with her and literally beg her to come into our building starting today. And we visited Black Rock and we visited Ty Oak, quick visits. And this will tie into obviously reentering school, but, you know, there's a lot of people out there, you know, everybody, obviously, you know, is entitled to their opinion, has an opinion. I put a stake in the ground saying that, you know, with many of my colleagues saying that school safety, student safety, staff safety is paramount. And real area of concern that that I had, and that was validated by those presentations, was around air quality. And today, working with Jeannie Reddy, who's the consultant, who will have a report. I'm trying to get her to come to our next school committee meeting next Thursday. She's gonna visit all of our buildings this week. We're looking again at ventilation, air exchanges. You know, recently, RIDE came out with some updated information, I think through Dr. Bromage, and was talking about needing to have four to six air exchanges per hour in each classroom. And also talking about fifteen cubic feet of air per individual in the classrooms. And as Jeannie mentioned today, it's very, very difficult to measure that. But she's looking at our system. She's looking at the air exchanges we put in. And, you know, Mr. Murray talks about all the time having data. We don't have great data on air quality. It's gonna be challenging, but she's gonna, not only, again, this is not a reason for us not to open schools ultimately, but I need to find the reason to come back and recommend to the committee that our schools are safe. And I have concerns about that. What we've asked Ms. Reddy to do is originally Dr. Bromage's presentation several weeks, maybe a month ago, was about practical solutions. And I think you've heard from many people, many of us walked out of there with more concerns and red flags. And I look at this, right or wrong, I look at this as if my daughter was going to school. Many people know she's an educator. And if my son, who's graduated, was a student in our schools. And I'm gonna continue to look from that lens. And we're trying to find as many ways as possible so that we can free up as much space over time so that we can bring students back. So we will have a report. Right now, she's going through our schools quickly. She'll be going through all of our schools this week to look at certain spaces. We have grave concerns over our nursing stations. Mr. Martin was with us today, as was Mr. Juisty and the custodian at at Black Rock, I'm sorry, at Ty Oak, and then we moved to Black Rock later this afternoon. But she's able to give us some practical information about things we can do, with just like ultraviolet lighting systems that they have that kill the bacteria up at the ceiling level. And, you know, a basic unit will cost about twelve thousand dollars. We looked at some of our interior nurses spaces, and I'm trying to get her to tell us, are there things we can do to utilize those spaces? She had talked about tents that the Attorney General's Office was able to construct interior tents in a large space. So we looked at some of our gym space, and we may have all other plans, but there's a way to build tents and create this negative pressure, zero pressure environment with some type of filtration system and blowers that will, you know, blow the air outside of one of the doors in our gyms. And, you know, that might be something, but we don't have prices on that. She's gonna put together some proposals, but, you know, we're really trying to find some practical ways. And I want to come back to you and say that, you know, unequivocally, I can't even say the word, sorry, but that, that, you know, without reservation, we know that our spaces are safe. And so this is a real issue. She agrees, and like I said, that Joe De Silva had mentioned at that presentation, which was two Fridays ago, that we need to have a third party come in, have an expert come in and assess our environment. So I plan on bringing back data. We plan on getting some data this week that's gonna allow us, you know, what we'll present later on in our initial phase to go forward. But we understand, you know, the governor also put a stake in the ground, and I need to make sure in a short period of time, we need to make sure that, you know, our space is usable or not. And if they're not, are there things we can do? We do have major concerns about some of the interior classrooms. Again, she hasn't been there yet, but just in terms of the plans of what we've shared with her, interior classrooms at the high school. Again, she hasn't been there yet, but just in terms of the plans of what we've shared with her, interior classrooms at the high school. You know, there's a difference between having an interior classroom that will have many students in it versus maybe some of the interior spaces that we use for staff, and limiting the number of staff. But again, she hasn't been to the high school. I believe tomorrow she's going to go to high school in Washington Oak, and we'll get to the other schools during the week. Ultimately, we're going to have a very comprehensive plan. But, you know, we've been working on this for over a week. I think you know that I was working with Mr. Anderson, we're working to get this individual, this company on board. They're on the master price agreement. And, you know, time is of the essence, we know that. We'll talk later on, after we present our plan, we're going to talk about the budget. Because for those that think the budget doesn't impact us, it's going to impact us gravely. And in this, we'll have to talk about, you know, we have been proactive and talked to the Department of Ed in terms of emergency repairs that we could apply for. We would need funds upfront, we know we would get a reimbursement rate. That reimbursement wouldn't happen until next year. But, again, we had thrown down, remember, about a half million dollars just in a ballpark about air quality. But I can tell you, one of the, one of the devices she had mentioned, and it was kind of like a fan that has these ultraviolet lights on it, that would go in a large area, like a gym or an auditorium. One of those costs $50,000. And I'm not saying we're doing that, you know, we'll present to you, we want to get in for practical. But just thinking about the minute, the small ultraviolet device that could go in a nurse's office, 1,200. If we had multiple spaces like that, it's going to add up very quickly. And as you'll see, when we get into the budget, we don't have the resources. So this is just a preview that we started the work. We have our expert, Department of Ed, you know, I should say to the governor. But we're supposed to get site visits, they're supposed to take place this week. As of today, I haven't heard from the Department of Ed or the governor's office who's ever setting that up. I assume it'll be through either office, that should be coming. They're going to try to spend an hour and a half, two hours in every building and give us some feedback. But again, I'm very comfortable that we'll be able to come back to you with a third-party's report. And again, this is not a reason, a way for me to find fault with our buildings so we don't open. I know that's been stated out there. I want, you know, and I've stated this consistently, want to make sure that we know what we're dealing with. We know that we meet those air exchanges in our classrooms. And we have multiple systems, it's not that easy in our buildings, we have multiple systems. So, you know, some of the, many of the classrooms may be easy to detect, but some are going to be very challenging. So that's what I wanted to present tonight, that we're in the process. I've been saying we need to get a third-party consultant in. I feel very comfortable that this is the person that RIDE actually used for their presentation. Again, Dr. De Silva had recommended to everybody, don't do this on your own, get a, get a third-party. That's what we've done, we're starting that, it started today. So I'm happy to be able to report that. I didn't want to come tonight saying we're still looking, we're still trying to get somebody in. Especially when, you know, we've been under the gun for a long time. But again, resources has been a major issue with us, especially in terms of funding.
Thank you, Mr. Levis. I'm going to start with Mr. Pearson. Do you have any questions for Mr. Levis?
Sorry, I'm a little distracted about another issue. So no, I don't have any immediate questions on this topic.
Do you think it would be wise if we discussed the distraction?
Yeah, it's tough, because we can't, it's kind of a point-of-order kind of, kind of issue. It's not really an agenda item, but, but I wanted to bring it to the committee's attention. I got a private message from someone as, as we were meeting. It appears our Zoom has maxed out to 500 attendees. And while we're providing an alternate YouTube link so people can watch the stream, the person who messaged me was concerned that if they have, if they have public comments on any of our public agenda items, they're unable to do so while watching the YouTube stream. So this creates kind of a problem concerning open meetings. And, and I don't know, I think we need, need some advice on how to move forward with this.
Yes, Mr. Levis, you have many suggestions. I'm wondering if, I'm not sure.
I can reach out to our legal counsel. I thought, and I, and again, I'm not the expert here, I will reach out to Mr. Anderson, if that's okay, the committee. I, I thought though, under the governor's executive order, and again, because we have, we're presenting it this way, maybe that negates that, but I thought there was different stipulations around how we conduct business that some bodies could even conduct them and tape them and make the tape available. But I, again, I'm not a lawyer, I don't want to pretend to be, let me.
You can't do that. I've, reach out to Mr. Anderson or Sean, I forget Sean's last name, sorry.
Sean Clough.
But I think because we put the fact that we take public comment on our agendas, that, that's what creates the issue.
Okay.
If we had, so I'd be interested to see what they say.
All right, let me do that. And I don't know if we want to take a break, you know, recess.
I had a private message, Mr. Murphy, also about the potential for reading the comments on YouTube on a public. And then I had noticed the same thing. So I don't know if you're, when you're talking, Mr. Anderson, if that would be appropriate. I know this is a delay, so we may have to wait after, but that's a potential solution.
It's an interesting solution. The, the issue with YouTube is it has two types of experience. You have a logged-in experience where you may be logged into a G, sorry, Google account. There's also a not logged-in experience with YouTube. If you do not have a Google account, you're unable to put in a question or a comment on the screen.
So let me call Mr. Anderson right now.
I think we, I think it might be wise for us to take a quick break. It's, I have 6:56. Why don't we, we convene at 7 o'clock? And hopefully, Mr. Levis will have a answer for us at that point. Sound good?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, yes.
Thank you. Great. So, Mr. Levis, did you want to give us a recap? So Mr. Anderson can tell us something about the open meeting.
Sure, there was a concern that we're maxed at 500. That concern is that there are other individuals that might want to be on but cannot leave comments. Even though we have it at YouTube Live, it's, they don't have the ability to comment, you know, live during the meeting. So the question was, you know, how do we proceed? Mr. Anderson, you're muted. There you go.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the school committee. My advice under the circumstances is, given that the capacity of Zoom is 500, given that we are here, is that you continue to conduct the meeting. That people who do not plan on making public comments, please switch over and watch it on YouTube. If you are done with the meeting, please switch it off. And my recommendation is to the school committee is to listen to as many comments as you possibly can, as long as you possibly can. These are difficult times, and we are doing the best that we can under the circumstances. And the tech, and this is the technology that we have to work with. Obviously, we cannot have an in-person meeting with 500 people under these current circumstances. Does anyone on the committee have questions for me?
No, I think your advice is, is working. We're already down to 476 and going lower. So I think we may have solved our predicament. Thank you so much, Mr. Anderson.
You're welcome.
Any other questions from the committee before we move?
The only suggestion I had was, we do have a number of employees that live out of, out of town. We have a number of employees that live out of town. If they want to switch over to YouTube, they should do that as well.
Wonderful. Thank you, Mr. Colley. Looks like we're slowly but surely shedding people from this particular Zoom. So I think we're, we're.
It's good.
Thank you, Mr. Pearson. I never, I'm sorry, what?
I was just saying, it's good now, we're below the cap. So if people are watching on YouTube, they should now try to join the Zoom, and they should be able to get in and be able to ask questions if they have them.
Right. Hey, do you think we need to let more people leave, or are we ready to resume?
I think we can resume, that's just my opinion, and I can get on with my question. All right, so, so that said, I do have a question, air quality question for Mr. Levis, if I can get my time back. Taking my time back, I've heard that a lot lately. So I saw the information that was provided to us about RIDE and doing, you know, doing some school visits with, with the inspections. I'd like for the people listening, so we can clarify the message. I don't know if it's that we're getting mixed messages, or just that the messages, since they're coming at different times from different places, just don't, don't seem to be coordinated well. So according to the Department of Health and the governor, all schools, except Providence and Central Falls, interestingly, have a green light for, for fully opening on September 14th. It can take a month to gradually implement that if they want. So really, we're talking about, what, October 14th? But what are the mixed messages here as far as air quality goes? Because we're given a green light that everything's okay, but, but at the same time, RIDE is saying, yes, we'll come into the schools, we'll, we'll tell you what you need to do for any kind of remediation or, or improve air quality. Of course, there's no funding behind that, but what, what is the cohesive message that should be the main takeaway for parents and staff from what we're hearing from the state?
The, I mean, you're asking for a cohesive message, and I, I agree fully that, you know, I mean, you know, I'm not trying to battle with the governor, I'm not trying to battle with the commissioner, right? But we've been saying the funding piece, we know, we've seen the gaps that we have. We know that there is concerns for our building. I mean, we're in the midst of stage two. We know that we have incredible needs, and nobody's checked out our building, so, other than us. So, you know, again, the funding hasn't been addressed. We'll talk about that in the budget piece. But we've applied for those funds that you gave us approval. I don't know if there's a process yet for us even to get reimbursement yet, or timeline. And in terms of air quality, RIDE, Department of Health, they were, they were at the presentation. They've put together twice, put forward presenters that have put up red flags, and their own individual said, get a third-party, which we're doing, which we've done. And hopefully, we can come back and say, at some point, our spaces, we have enough space to service our student population and our staff. So the message I'm trying to convey is, we're doing exactly what I believe to do, that we need to do, that we were requested to do. I know people are frustrated, but, you know, somebody said to me the other day, like, I watched North Kingston School Committee meeting this past weekend. And, and, you know, like, not every community is the same in Rhode Island, let me say that. And our variables may be completely different. But in terms of air quality and concerns, you know, we've been very consistent for the last month about that, and we're doing something about it. I have no idea, you know, RIDE has said they're going to send experts to us. Today's Monday, they're supposed to see every building in every district in the state this week. So I can't answer that question, but I can tell you, we're doing due diligence, we're going to come back, we're going to find a way to open as many classrooms as we can. I'm hoping there'll be a cost to it. And I will, you know, hopefully be asking the committee, we'll be discussing that when it comes forward. And we need to figure out, you know, how are we going to be able to fund this? I don't know if the cost will be a half million, I don't know if it'll be 200,000, I don't know. But, so the message I want to convey is, we're doing what we believe that we need to do to get a green light for our schools. And, you know, I can't speak, the governor gives a green, you know, I don't know how she knows how much PPE we have. I don't know how she knows, you know, the condition, our available, you know, of our schools. I don't know that, so I can't answer for the governor or the Commissioner of Education. But I believe the message we're trying to convey is, we want to make sure that these buildings are safe, and we're doing that.
All right, thank you, Mr. Levis.
And I know that didn't answer directly the question, Mr. Pearson, but I can't speak for the governor or for RIDE.
Understood, you know, I'm, I'm looking as you are for these kind of answers. And, and I think as long as we're communicating as clearly as, as best we can, and I think we are, that's, that's all we can do at this, this point.
Yeah, and I appreciate the question, because I think a lot of people, you know, what I'm hearing, there are a lot of, people are saying a lot of things that, that we're saying, that I'm allegedly saying, and I don't think I can be any more clear, that we have concerns and we're doing what we need to do to alleviate and address those concerns. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, we've got a third-party, right?
Correct.
And, and the governor is, and RIDE, I guess, is supposed to be coming in at the same time. They're telling us to open our schools, but they don't really know if we have, if, you know, if we have the, the right air quality.
Yeah, I think in fairness, though, the governor did allow us to face things in, which is something we'll talk about next. And also said, you know, when you give the green light, you still do caution, you look left and you look right. You know, we've been clear about what our, our concerns are, we'll talk about it next agenda item, and then we're going to talk about the budget, because it's, it's impossible to say that funding is not, does not impact us in terms of, you know, even, even getting the consultant, you know, it took a while to secure that. But, you know, fortunately, you approved us to spend the money, the CARES Act and the COVID-19 money. But, you know, some districts, I live in a community where they're telling people to spend more money. The state of Massachusetts has given communities significant amount of money in addition to their budget to address COVID-19, whether it's staffing or infrastructure. We, we don't have that, so.
So, so I, what happens if they come back and they say, the air is poor, you can't open schools?
Well, I mean, I think we're going to, you know, I don't want to get into the next agenda item, but I, the reason that I called Friday, and Mr. Anderson is on here, he knows how important this was. You know, I was a real thorn in his side, because, you know, you know, we're not the only district he represents, but this is, this for me is the most crucial. I need to look you in the eye, our community, our staff, our families, and say, we're doing the most that we can do to make sure our environment's safe. I believe that this individual is going to come back with some practical solutions for us to do that. At the end of the day, though, there's, there may be some big-ticket items that are going to need to be completed in a short period of time. We don't have the funds to do that. Again, that's.
Obviously, yeah.
I'm just, I'm just, you know, speculating, so. But right now, the goal for me is to get areas freed up so we can open school.
And.
And face things in, so that's what the purpose is, face students in.
I, I was going to ask you a question, but it was getting into the next agenda item, so I'm just going to leave it at that. Thanks.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Colonian. Mr. Murray?
Thank you. So I watched the governor's press conference today, and one of the things she said was, you know, air quality is not a reason not to open, you got to get creative, we hear a lot of that. I guess, I'm a little concerned, so we have a third-party involved. Craig, can you tell me when we could expect a report? Does the consultant have any timeframe on how long this will take?
Well, I, I asked her to, to be able to give us some documentation and update for next Thursday's school committee. So hopefully by next Tuesday, I would share it with the school committee, I'm hoping. We just talked, like I said, I was on Friday afternoon. We, we met today, Jason was there, we went through a couple of buildings, we're looking for spaces. You know, we're concerned about nurses' stations, and we need to have spaces that are going to suffice, you know, we, you know, we have, you know, our facilities have great needs. There's not a lot of free space in them, you know, our current spaces that we use for like nursing in most buildings are very challenging based on the recording. you know, our current spaces that we use for like nursing in most buildings are very challenging based on the requirements that we've received from like the CDC, or recommendations from, you know, the CDC, Department of Health. So right now, I'm trying to have her look at spaces that we, we'd like to use and make some recommendations, but we should have something by next school committee meeting.
Alright, so, so at least gives a timeframe for that. As far as RIDE is concerned, has RIDE given us any sort of schedule on when they intend their team to come through the building?
No, I believe that I'm the point person, I'll receive an email, I haven't received that email yet. We, yeah, we do have a meeting with, I mean, and I think this ties into it, because the Governor has like this emergency operations center that she's activated, that'll be mobile. I have a meeting this Thursday at 11:30, and part of it is to problem solve, they wanna know all of our problems, so they'll, they'll get an earful, and air quality and facilities is, is one of them, funding's another, but they're coming out Thursday, and we'll address this with them also. But in terms of the, the RIDE individuals or the team that's gonna come out and look at our building, we, I have not received the email, at least, I haven't been on my email since the meeting started, so maybe I've received it tonight, so. That could be, sometimes I receive those emails later in the evening, but I, I haven't checked my email since the meeting started, so.
Alright, so, so we're not in tandem with RIDE, we have our own study being done. RIDE's gonna walk through, they're very, the Governor is very specific today that it's not inspection, it's a walkthrough. So, we're calling ours an inspection, correct?
It's a feasibility study, we're gonna get recommendations, I wanna know if this space isn't good. I mean, four to six, so it used to be, Dr. Bromwich had said, six air exchanges per hour, right, which is one every 10 minutes. Now they're saying four to six, right? 15 cubic feet of air, you know, per, per individual in a room, I don't know how they, I mean, I'm sure that's just a mathematical figure, that, you know, equation, but these are things that we need to, you know, like, Jeannie Reddy said, I don't, you know, you wouldn't be able to, you know, with our systems, we're not able to say, yes, we have four air exchanges, they're gonna have to, she described an extensive process that would have to take place to figure that out, but she's gonna do her best to do that, so we know that, yes, we're meeting the requirements that RIDE put forth, four to six air exchanges. I don't know how they're gonna figure that out in a walkthrough, but I'm very comfortable now that we have not only an expert, but we have somebody that RIDE had hired as an expert, so.
Okay, I, I guess, my, my only, my concern is, I'm sure what my fellow members share is about, and Member Pearson brought this up, is the messaging, like, I, I don't know where the end of the rainbow is, because it seems like we have no clarity, and even if our report says one thing, it says, we need all this fancy stuff, we need, we need UV lighting, we need air changers, filters, X, Y, Z. And then the Governor comes down, and RIDE comes down, they do their walkthrough, and they say, you don't need any of that. To meet our standards, you need to, you need to just put some box fans in a room, which still presents an electrical, right?
These are their standards, they came out with the four to six air exchanges, you know, so, you know, at the end of the day, I'm gonna stick to what we've, you know, like, you know, even in, in Mr. Anderson's can say, he and I had a conversation about, you know, many people aren't doing this, you know, recently, I, you know, Cranston wasn't gonna get the consultant, but now they have Dr. Bromwich, but in my understanding is, RIDE is paying for that. And again, I, that's what my understanding is, I believe we're doing the right thing, we said we were gonna do the right thing. You know, there's a lot of heat that's being taken for doing the right thing, we're not saying, you know, never said that, trying to find reasons not to open school, I wanna make sure that our schools are safe. And, you know, if people wanna fault me for that, so be it, I think this is something that was brought to our attention, doing the right thing for, I, I'm sorry that the Governor can say, air quality's not a reason not to open schools. I disagree, especially with, there's an article I'll share with the committee, I'll share publicly, that some of the top scientists in the world wrote to the WHO and talked about airborne transmission is what we need to address. And that's what we're talking about tonight. Air, air quality is about airborne transmission, right? It's about ventilation, filtration, disinfecting. So to have an expert come in and say to us, yes, you can use this space, or the way it is now, you can't use it, but if you do these minor things, which you know, everything's gonna cost money, but we can make the space usable and safe? I think that's the right thing to do.
I, I'm bringing it up as an issue of like, I am as unclear as anybody out there on some of this, because I watched the news conference today, just like anyone did, I know what we're trying to do, I know we're trying to do the right thing and hire the experts, but everyone has a valid point that this takes time, right? We, we, we're trying to make these decisions as fast as we can, and then what happens, you know, where is the standard, right? So we had some standards on operational readiness, we had some standards on PPE. We had a, a clear goal that was like, here's, here's, if you can't do this, then do that, right? And so I guess, my hope is, some of this report that we're getting has some of that, because I know that we can't afford a million dollars worth of air quality stuff, I don't think anybody can. So where is the mitigating factors to say, if you can't do this, then, you know, just like the six feet apart, is it perfect? No, but there is a point where you have to say, is, you know, nothing's, I said it before, nothing's safe, it's safer. You know, I can't put the kid in the bubble, roll in the school, and hope everything's gonna be okay, including my own kids, right? But I know that there's a certain tipping point where my, my daughter and my son, it's more beneficial for them and me to take that risk, and so I'm just trying to get to that point, even putting on my parent hat of saying, where is that point, you know, and I know you're doing your best, I just don't know, well, I guess what I'm advocating for is, I guess in our own report, is to have sort of the, the good, better, best model, right? And I hate seeing that, because when it comes to safety, we always want the best, right? I want, I want the Volvo to protect my kids.
Right.
But the truth is, I might not be able to afford the Volvo, so if we, at least we have the fallback of the distance line. So at least if we give them an option that has ventilation mitigation, then they can make the choice on what they do, you know, I think that's the point we have to get to, because I just don't, I feel like we're, we don't wanna get to a point where we're dragging this out over months and trying to get the best model.
But nobody's, you know, I, I can tell you, and you weren't in our conversation, but my conversation with this individual is, I mean, that's why I, instead of her coming in with her whole team and spending, you know, we don't have weeks, right? Spending, you know, intensive amount of time in one building, and then going to the next building, we don't have that time. We did two buildings today, they're doing two large buildings tomorrow, and my whole conversation was to identify the spaces where we can use currently, or there's minor things that we can do to make them usable, so we can get as many students in in a short period of time. But I still feel that this is the right thing to do. We were looking just to open windows, remember? We were looking, that was the mitigation for this, opening windows and then figuring out what we do with interior classrooms. And then this came about with one consultant, an expert, a month ago, and then two weeks ago, a follow-up presentation, where, again, it was strongly suggested to hire a third party, this was from RIDE. So, you know, it takes time, but the other thing too, is we didn't have approval to even spend money, and we're spending money we don't even have yet, so, you know, in our defense, we're not a North Kingston that's saying they're gonna use their fund balance to do all these different things, or this committee's approving them, maybe hiring 13 physicians with their fund balance. We are just not in that situation, and so I'm gonna stand by, you know, that we are doing the right thing. I know we're up against the, you know, the, the, the finish line here almost, and, but I, I'll stand by what we're doing. I think we're doing, I know we're doing the right thing, and I'm not looking for a Cadillac, a Volvo, I'm not even looking for like a 10-year-old Chevy, I'm looking for something that we can say, no, but honestly, we can say that we've done what we can do, what's realistic to move forward, and I think that's the right thing to do. And we've been honest, I've been honest about that all along, there's been no wavering on my part, and I'm not an expert in air quality. That's why we, we have one coming in.
Yeah, and it's not a combination of anything you're doing, I'm not saying it's wrong, at all. My comments are more directed at the approach, just making sure that we have some good, better, best models when we see this report, and that's conveyed to the consultant, that, because it is very, gonna be very difficult on this side of the fence to make a decision on how we move forward and potentially incremental phases based on that data, and it just, if we only get one set of recommendations, that's like,
Right.
Is what you need to do, that's gonna be really difficult. But if we say, you know, listen, what are the practical things that we can do moving forward? And then maybe, you know,
Right.
And we get some additional financial help, we can do more.
Right.
That's all I'm asking, it's not, I, I agree with the thought, you know I'm a data-driven person, I think getting the data matters, I don't trust the team, no offense to RIDE, but, you know, we know what the tone has been set, get, get kids back in school. And I wholeheartedly agree with that, but we do have to protect the kids in our town, this is pushed down to a local level. So I don't disagree with you at all, it's just our approach, that's all.
Yeah, and I, but I, I just wanted to reassure you, that is our approach here. You know, again, I can't help what other people write, but this has never been a tactic to, when the Governor says, we know staff will get sick, we know students will get sick, right? Once we open those gates, that's it, we're on our own, and I wanna make sure that we're doing everything we can do, and I understand, and, you know, I see the comments, I don't read Facebook, but people share with me, you know, there's a lot of reasons why we're at this spot today, and not three or four weeks ago, or five weeks ago, that are unique to Coventry, and we're gonna talk about funding later on, it just is, you know, again, using our president's, it is what it is, but I believe that we're not sitting, we're not waiting here, we're doing the best we can, and I know you're not saying we're not, but I think it's important, because as superintendent, and I would think as school committee, if I know there's more we could do, but we're just saying, oh, it's okay, don't worry about air quality, and I'm hearing, and I'm being told by experts that airborne transmission is number one, then I, I think I have a responsibility to this community, whether I be the most loved or the most hated individual, to do what we're doing, and come back and say, these are the things that we can do, and I, and I've committed to that. We're not gonna please everybody, and I'm not trying to, I'm trying to do what's in the best interest of this community, our staff, and our students, and our families, because if students go home and infect family members, and we could have done something else, I will take, you know, I, I will own that. And so, at the end of the day, we'll make recommendations, the committee can do what they choose to do, but I'm gonna be able to look everybody in, in, in the eye and say, we did the best that we could do, and I'm comfortable with that. Right now, I'm not, I'm very uncomfortable with our buildings, very uncomfortable.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Levis, Mr. Mari. Mr. Florio, any questions or comments?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, I think the vast majority of parents, from what I hear in town, wanna full-on opening. And what happens is, when we say, we can't do that, and the Governor goes on television and uses her a bully pit to say, every school except Central Falls and Providence should have a full-on opening, makes it very confusing to the parents of the town of Coventry. It makes it very confusing, because they wanna full-on, they wanna full-on opening. And I've seen, I've been on Facebook, and I've seen these questions, and I've seen the surveys, and all this stuff. But that's, that's what they're demanding. Very, very few people truly understand our financial situation, they do not know about the vote that was taken, where the parents and the schools were, were told, the vote was not taken into consideration. So they have no idea what's happening, probably until this very meeting. They don't, they, they don't know about the underfunding of the schools, they don't know that Mr. Levis and, and the school committee have been talking to the council continuously since October last year about our budget and about our concerns. They don't know that. And then the Governor goes on TV and says, okay, all, all schools except these two can have full-on openings. And that's just not fair, Madam Chair, that's not fair to the superintendents in the, in the state of Rhode Island, it's not fair to the school committees, because we're being portrayed as the individuals that are blocking children from going to school and for them to go back to work. Because they're going, because if we do distance learning, they're going to have to be, be home and assist the children in distance learning, and they've learned, they, they've had enough of that. They, they, they want them in the classroom with teachers, and I don't blame them, but at the same time, our, our role, like Mr. Levis said, is public safety. The last thing I wanna do as a school committee person is say, okay, we're gonna open schools, and we end up with a kindergarten, or their parents, or their grandparents having coronavirus, because we didn't do our due diligence. It's not right, Madam Chair, it's, it's unfair and unjust what the Governor has done to us. And I'm being specific with the Governor. It's, it's not bad enough that we got cut from the federal government, we got cuts from the state government, now we're getting cuts from our local, from our local town, and we have to live day-to-day on a budget at the whim of the council, it's just not fair, and we have to do the best we can. It's like doing the most with the least, and we've been doing that for a long, you know, Madam Chair, we've been doing that for a long time. So, that's my, my concern is, that we're gonna vote to send these kids back to school, and, I mean, the air quality, I'm just speaking about Allen Shaw and Feinstein Middle School, and, and what I've seen, it, it's atrocious with sending kids to school with mold issues, and with allergy issues, and with flu season coming, and to expect they're not gonna get the coronavirus as well. And it's not fair to the educators either, Madam Chair, to place, place everyone, and us, and to place us in this tough situation. And that's all I have to say, thank you, thank you, thank you for allowing me to speak, Madam Chair, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Florio, my only final comment is, I think the Governor, in her saying that all schools or all communities except for Providence and Central Falls can open, does not reflect that she believes that every single district will have complete in-person for all students. She pretty much hinted that at the press conference today. She said that every community is different, and depending on where you are, even though the, you know, you have to understand, the ability to open schools has something to do with the infection rate. And so all of Rhode Island has, you know, the 1% infection rate, except for Providence and Central Falls. So that's a huge indicator to allow schools to open. However, all of the standards, what is it, five pillars, have to be met. And I think she and the Commissioner know that, so some communities will meet all five pillars, I have no doubt. Very small communities that have a very small population, maybe new buildings, maybe even have passed recent bonds to in, improve their air, air quality, you know, with new systems. Unfortunately, every, every district is different, as we all know, and there will be some tools that the, that the ventilation will not make the grade, so to speak. Again, when the, the Governor announced that there was gonna be a group from RIDE going to every single district and looking at every school, she was very careful to note, when what the reporter asked, that they are not gonna rate air quality in schools. They're just going to look to see if we have proper PPE supplies, if in fact, you know, desks seem to be sprout with social distancing. All of the plans that, that, that the districts have put in to RIDE have been approved. It's just a question of how they will be in fact phased in. And the group that's going around school to school, some of them will be experts, but they are not gonna be there to figure out if the air quality is good, bad, or indifferent. Which is why I'm very pleased that we went ahead and hired the group that is coming in, that actually walked the schools today, who will be able to give us some real indication as to whether or not some of our schools, some of our classrooms are going to make the grade. I think the interesting piece is that the Governor basically said, and the Commissioner both said today, that they expect districts- that they expect districts will phase in their plans. They know as well as all of us in this district and community that to have every single child in every single class, quite honestly, our elementary school rooms aren't big enough to put 20 something kids in, in, in distance to desks six feet apart. So, so we all know that. So the best we can do is, 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 is do the best we can, which is allow a phased-in sense and not think that we're going to open our schools with all, all kids. So when you hear that from the governor, basically what she's saying is, as far as rate of infection, yes, we're ready to open all schools in Rhode Island except for Providence and Central Falls. That does not mean that every district will meet the five standards that are being put forward by RIDE. And I think that's the piece people don't hear. They think, "Oh, the governor said we can open all our schools." She isn't really, she isn't really saying that. She's saying you can if you meet the standards. So that's where we get down to the nitty-gritty and where we're going to figure out if in fact we have met four of the standards, five of the standards, two of the standards, whatever. But I do assure the public that we will do the best we possibly can do because having kids in front of teachers is our goal. We all know it and that's what we're going to try to do. But, you know, as far as blaming, there's so much blame going around out there. I hate to say anyone is really to blame, except in some ways our own town in the fact that we're working on a 12th of our budget. We still have not passed our fiscal '21 budget. And until we do that, you know, it's pretty hard to figure out what we're going to do in, in the sense of spending money on supplies, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So I'm sure there are a lot of parents out there that are very concerned, their children, we're not giving them an answer they want to hear. Well, they need to write to their town councilman and say, "Why haven't we seen a budget? Why haven't we, why haven't we presented with a budget map that we can pass?" That's it for me. I don't know if there are any other questions from the public on this particular issue. It's, this issue again is not about opening what plan, what we were intending to do. It's just about this report on our air quality. I think we've gone a little bit off topic a bit, but is there anybody who has a question about our plan for air quality or any questions about this? Mr. Murphy, I see some hands raised.
Okay, first up will be Susan Mills. Susan, if you could just state your name for the record, your address and unmute your mic. Susan, you'll need to unmute your mic. Okay, we'll go on to the next person. Marissa, please state your name for the record and unmute your mic.
Hello?
Marissa? Marissa, I see your mic is unmuted. Do you want to speak? We can hear you.
So I see that I am unmuted, but I cannot hear anyone talking.
We can hear you, Marissa. We can hear you.
Hi Craig, I can't hear you though. I didn't mute, hold on, let me check my. Okay, so I'm not sure, I'm not sure I'm going to be able to hear a response, so I'll try to do it through YouTube after. My name is Marissa Eisner, my address is Foreman Road Drive. And my question is, in regards to the air quality, I understand all the steps that you're taking and I, and I do thank you on behalf of the students and teachers and administration that you are looking into that. But that has been a problem for many years. This is not the first time that obviously it's an issue. As you know, Craig and Dave, that at Hopkins Hill, I mean, my child went there and wonderful teachers, wonderful administration, building is deplorable. Air wasn't great. So now he's at Feinstein, again, air quality not be great, might not be great, but if it's in a hybrid model, can't the students be separated enough and the windows open and the doors open, that it would be enough at least to start staggering that way despite the air quality, because that's not going to be an overnight fix and it's been a problem before. So even though we're in the middle of a crisis, the air quality was going to be less than anyway. So why can't we start that way? Because I'm concerned about the mental health status of our children. And if there's ways to do it, I understand the four to six exchanges, but they've already been living that way. And we all have our hardships. We are not in this extremely affluent community. We're going to, you know, deal with the mediocrity with our budget. Is it that, is it that dangerous that we can't even start with 12 kids in a class? Still a guy.
Yeah, I'll, I'll answer your question, a couple of things. One is that, so we're talking about air quality now. I know people, you know, that air quality, we, we have testing that's done every year. We have a lot of humidity issues, we have a lot of air circulation issues, I'm sure at the middle school, but we'll identify that. But the concern with, when we talk about air quality now is as it relates to airborne transmission of COVID-19. And so I'm not looking for problems, you know, we have enough issues, as you say, to deal with. On a, on a good day, on a, you know, on a typical day, we deal with a lot of challenges here in Coventry. Our building age is, is, you know, condition is one of those. I'm proud to say that we're actually taking steps to address that. But in terms of COVID-19, these are issues that have been brought to our attention by experts that the Department of Ed brought forward. So I'm, I'm hoping that we can do that. I'm hoping that we can bring students back. But I'm not comfortable until I get someone to sign off and say, "Yes," because you're, you're making a statement, isn't it okay? You know, this is different than just typical, you know, the typical conditions in our school. And so the goal is to get the clearance so we can do that. I, I'm not against doing that. I'm trying to find ways that we can do that. Something we'll talk about, you know, RIDE, you know, the, the standards have, have changed. For us to bring back full in our students in elementary school, which we'd love to do, but let's be realistic, we will be lucky to have three feet separation in between students. And before they were saying six feet, then they were saying three and a half. So there's going to be compromise, definitely compromise, if we're to do the things that they're asking to do. We're trying to expedite this air quality process and, and by all means, love to bring in the middle school and the high school kids in a hybrid model at some point. So, you know, I'm, I'm not taking a stand that we're going to make a decision tonight and we're going to revisit in January. That's not the stand that we're going to be taking. But air quality is, is crucial and we are addressing it. And, you know, I know it's not fast enough for anybody, but we're doing what we've, we're able to do. And I'm, I'm, you know, I'm happy at least today to say that we have this person that's going to give us the best information that we can do something about in the shortest period of time. So my long-winded way of saying, I, I hear what you're saying and that's our goal. We want to do that. So I'm not, I'm not adverse to doing that. We just need the okay. And I'm hoping that we get that sooner than later. All right, Mr. Murphy, who's next?
All right, Crystal is next. Crystal, if you could state your name for the record as well as your address and unmute your mic.
Hi, Crystal Bargantin, Fort Eagle Drive. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, Crystal.
Okay. So I have a, a question and two comments. My first question is, do we have a percentage of parents who have already opted to have their children distance learn to date?
To date, we have, we think we have about, and Mr. Coward can jump in, about 25% across, you know, split across the board from students from pre-K through grade 12. And that, that, we'll have a, a definite number Wednesday. We, we, parents had asked, they weren't ready to make a decision. And so we, we, you know, we allowed more time, but, and I, you know, that's going to impact obviously too, our, our, you know, class sizes. And, you know, we'll take that in consideration when we look at the air quality also.
Okay. So then my first comment is, how, I don't know how anybody can justify suggesting putting our children in tents or keeping doors and windows open when we've worked so hard to keep them secure in buildings against intruders, active shooters, et cetera. I, I have not heard one mention of that in any comment or any pressure from the governor. So that's a comment that I wanted to throw out there. And my second comment is, in full disclosure, I work for the NEARI. I represent Department of Health Professional Staff Association, which have been tasked to conduct these walkthroughs. And I will confirm Ms. Patnose's comments that these are not experts. They are receiving a one-hour training and they, they are be, by no means experts in air, in air quality. They're being tasked to walk through the buildings and ask the LEA reps on site a series of questions. So I would not base any real stance on what the outcomes of these walkthroughs are. So, thank you.
Thanks, Crystal. And, and, and just, you know, I mean, we, we have explored looking at outdoor. And again, I think it ties to air quality because we've looked at, we have some quotes and, and, you know, we're looking at using some outdoor space. Again, we'll need funding to do like 16 tents at about $3,000 renting them for a couple of months. But that'll give us some flexibility. But we have discussed that as a school committee and as superintendent publicly about we're exchanging one safety for another. So we recognize that, you know, and, and all I can say is that there's a lot of pressure, obviously, from everywhere. And, you know, we're trying to make the best decision. I try to put forth the best thinking that, that I, I have working with my colleagues and, and, you know, our administration and we, we share that with the school committee publicly to make the best decision, you know, outside of whatever pressure is coming our way. And we, we will continue to do that. We're not going to please everybody, as we say, but we're going to be honest about why we're making the recommendations we are. So I appreciate your comments.
Up next is Mrs. Newt. Mrs. Newt, if you could unmute your mic and state your name and address for the record. Mrs. Newt? If you could unmute your mic and state your name and address for the record.
Maybe we could go to the next person, go back.
Kelly, you're next up. If you could state your name and address for the record and unmute your mic.
Hi, Kelly Aaron. I'm Sugar Maple Drive. As the school committee knows, I am a teacher in the district, but more importantly, I'm a parent. I want to thank the school committee for hiring an expert. Bottom line is, a teacher, I need to go back to school. I can't imagine starting the school year without meeting my students. I teach the spectrums. I teach a very high-performing eighth grade student. But I also teach very challenging students with emotional issues and behavior losses. If you don't meet me and have the Aaronicus, lack of a better word, it's going to be very difficult then for them to want to work. I will go in school when I'm told to, I will take care of myself and do the best that I can to protect myself. I am very concerned myself about my kids who both go to Coventry. I took it many, several years ago. Senior, and his nine. I think that we understand what the buildings are like because we're in them every day. You know, so when the whole stomach virus went through, my son got it three times because just kids just kept passing it. So yes, we've always had poor air quality, but now we have a pandemic of a disease that kills people. So I don't want to be that doesn't know for sure that my school committee said to me and looked me in the eye and said, "Kelly, it's okay to stay." We know he's nine, he's going to take, he's going to do what he does, but we've made it as safe as possible. So I don't want the public to think teachers don't want to go back. I'm concerned about the kids. I think the school committee are taking a look at things because kids are not as savvy as adults. They're not going to follow the rules, they're not going to touch each other. And what you're seeing when you're colleges where kids are supposedly older and smarter, it's not about how well you protect yourself, it is being in confined spaces without proper ventilation that spreads the disease like crazy. And I don't want my kids to be that 1% or 2% or 5% that end up with a leg illness or, God forbid, something fatal because we jumped the gun. So I understand schools need to be open. Personally, as a teacher, I want and need to go back. But I need this to, as Mr. Levis said, look me in the eye. So when I make my decisions to whether I'm sending my kids, that you did what you had to do to make it safe. And yes, the governor is sending in a couple of national guide people and everything else, but they are, they're doing a one hour in the building. They're not going to classrooms, they're not looking at ventilation, they're not looking at spaces, they're not looking at spacing. It's something superficial and honestly quite irritating. So I thank you for doing your diligence and I thank you for making sure that staff is more importantly making sure my kids are going to be safe. So thank you.
You're welcome, Kelly.
All right, Mr. Murphy, who's next?
Okay, up next is Shay. Shay, if you could unmute your mic and state your name and address for the record. Shay, you're unmuted, if you talk to me, she'll be able to hear you. Okay, we'll move on to the next person. Horetia, you are next. If you could state your full name for the record and unmute your mic.
Good evening. My name's Armando Horetia, 11 Viola Street. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you, folks. Just a quick question, since the air quality assessment is still in its preliminary stages, for lack of a better term. And I, I thank the committee at large for raising all these concerns as well as being very transparent about what is being done and what is, is unknown. Would you consider extending the deadline for parents to make a decision about committing to a full remote distance learning for their individual child? That deadline is Wednesday, the 2nd. It appears that the consultant still has not completed her tour of all the buildings in the district. And that also appears to be the same day potentially that the state will come by and do whatever it is that they intend to do. So would you be, would you consider extending that deadline so that parents can at least have a little better sense? Or will you not expect to have that information available at the end of the week in order for parents to be able to make a decision? It, it just seems that the timing and the, this critical assessment component, which is material to whatever the re-entry plan is going to be, the timing is still too abrupt for some parents to make a decision. Thank you.
You know, that, that's a great question. So extending, you know, we have districts around us that had set this in stone maybe a month ago. And, you know, we, when we did our initial survey, we had parents, we still today, I have parents who have said to me, "I don't think I'm going to send my children back," but I didn't fill out the survey. The reason to have a, a date is to help us plan. Let's be honest, we're just trying to figure out who do we need to, how are we going to count for these students who are distance learning, versus students who want to come back to school, families want them to come back to school. So I can discuss with our team, the ramifications, I don't want to pretend, you know, to know all the, the impact this has. I know definitely in scheduling, but the other, the other part is that we want to support our families. So I'm giving you kind of a roundabout answer tonight. I, I definitely can, 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 you know, look into this and see, is that a possibility? You know, honestly, if somebody doesn't make the decision, and then before school starts, they say to us, you know, based on where we're at, what phase, they say that they want to go into distance learning, I think it's going to be, I'll be hard-pressed to say no, I mean, just between you and me. But in terms of keeping the survey open, we will definitely discuss that. But we are, you know, the only reason we do this, I, I, I think I speak for 99% of the people, including the school committee, there's no, there's no gains from doing this type of work. We do it because we care about kids. I, I care about my future, my children's future, and I know it rests in their hands, and I want to do everything I can do, which means supports our students, support our staff, to make the best decisions and provide the best education we can. So we want to work with our families. We don't want to fight with people. We want to work and, and put together, put forth what is going to make the best difference in your child. And so we will definitely consider that. I will talk to Mr. Cow at the Assistant Superintendent at the end of this meeting, and get his thoughts, and get our administrative's thoughts. But thanks for bringing that up. Who's next, Mr. Murphy?
And next is Nicole C. If you could state your name and address for the record and unmute your mic.
Hi there. My name is Nicole Carterelli. My address is 250 Hammett Road. I had a question. I did read the RIDE recommendations for air quality, and when I read it, it did say four to six exchanges, which you're saying now they say six exchanges. My question to you, when I read it, it did state that there would be a possibility of using individual units for classrooms that might not meet the standard. When you meet with the person that you're meeting with for air quality, or when you met with her, did you discuss that with her? And is that a particular option? I heard you say earlier, you were talking about ultraviolet lights, but that's not what they were talking about in the RIDE recommendations.
Yeah, so the ultraviolet lights that I brought up were specific to certain interior areas, and, and again, to Mr. Murray's point, I'm not looking for the gold standard, I'm not looking for the, you know, the Cadillac. We're looking at a specific environment, and A, trying to figure out, does it have the four exchanges? Forget the six, right? We're looking at the four exchanges. And so I'm sure that'll come up when we get to the interior classrooms at the middle school, some of the interior spaces, but the, the, most of the elementary schools that we met, we did today, visited, they mostly have exterior classrooms, so we didn't get into those individual units, but I'm sure that'll come up. Again, we want to do what we can do to provide the safest environment at the least expense. And we'll look at short-term and long-term issues. I mean, there are many people who are talking about these, the schools have been in certain situ, a state of disrepair. I mean, we can't be more clear that we've said that all along, that we've received zero, except for last year, dollars in terms of capital over the last 12 years, and 200,000, which impacts all of these systems, so. But yes, I'm sure that'll come up.
Right.
I will definitely ask.
Yeah.
Those areas.
Okay. Just because I agree with Luke Murray, I think we need a good, better, best scenario. And maybe some of those exterior classrooms don't need so much air, you know, filtration, but some of the inner classrooms do, and there is a way to cost-effectively do that. So I'm hopeful, maybe you can get that clarified. And then I just want to comment that I'm a mom of two boys, one in the middle school, one who's going into the high school, and I can't employ you enough, I, I just, if, I am so hoping that they can have in-person learning. This last year of distance learning, on paper, my boys did excellent. It looks as if, you know, they were awesome students. They got, one of them got all Es, the other got all As and a B+ in algebra. They did, you know, on paper really well, but I can tell you personally, emotionally, they did not do well. So I'm really hoping we can get back to some form of in-person learning.
Thank you. Who's next, Mr. Murphy?
Up next is Ann. Ann, if you could state your name and address for the record and unmute your mic.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, this is Ann Benzo. I live at 30 Sugar Maple Drive. I am a teacher in the town. I've been, this will be my 32nd year teaching. I've been at Tyog and Western, the times that I've taught. And I do want to thank you all for all the hard work you're doing on this. It is a thankless job, and I do want to make sure I do thank you. You've been working so hard on all of this and making some very, very hard decisions. I, I have very mixed emotions about this. I want to be back, I want to be with the kids, but I hope that the families know that the kids are not going to be in the typical classroom that they're used to when we go back to school. It's going to be staying in your chair. Recession's going to be different. Lunch is in the classroom, and it's, it's not going to be normal learning, and that's going to be very hard for the kids also. My biggest concern that I have personally, my classroom, I'm currently at Western Coventry, when I've gone in for, to get my room ready, to get ready for the, the coming year, the first day in, in the summer, the, for the last two years, I've walked in and my room has been covered in mold, because the ventilation system has not worked. So the fans didn't run most of the summer, and anything that was fabric had gray mold. My doors, which are wood, were covered with mold, the metal walls were covered with mold, and the fans aren't running. And I don't know if they're running now. When I told my principal what was happening, she said I had to leave, she didn't want me in the room, I didn't want to be in the room, and I sure don't want kids in that room. And I hope that that has been addressed by now, I would assume it has, with the way the ventilation issues have been, being a focus. But that's an issue in my whole wing. It wasn't just my room, it was all of the rooms on that side of the building, that there was no fan running. So this is a big problem, and parents don't know this, I'm not trying to scare people, but it's reality. And there, there has to be something done to make sure kids are going to be safe. And I know you're trying to do that, and I hope that it does get worked out, but I don't think, I want people to know that this is not just something that's being made up. There really are issues in air quality in our buildings. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Ann.
Thank you.
Up, up next is Shay. Shay, if you could state your name and address for the record and unmute your mic.
My name is Shay Scott, 5 Tarot Drive. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, thank you for coming back to me, guys. I just want to say hi to Mrs. Patnade, I do know your daughter, and the rest of you, I do see that you're working really hard to come up with a plan. I think most parents right now, from the comments I'm seeing, are trying to figure out, are we, at this point, two weeks out from school, are they going back full-time, half-time? I know we have the distance learning. And do each principal at each school have a plan for, especially the little ones? My daughter's going to middle school, but what the process is going to be? I think if we say, hey, everybody return to school on September 14th, and not have some kind of implemented plan of walking even into the building for these kids to get to their classroom, it's going to be a little chaotic. They're going to have new things to follow, they're going to have these policies they've never even heard of, that is all new due to this COVID. Being in the medical field, my question is, is, you know, there's the school nurse, but is there going to be someone that asks, is there going to be like a protocol, kids being checked on, hey, are, you know, is someone checking, like, I go into a medical building, I have to get my entire family screened and tested for fever and questions asked? Is that, is that something that the town of Coventry might consider?
So Shay, I, I think, right now, we're still talking about air quality, so that's a great question. We'll get to the next agenda topic.
Okay.
So, and I, I can address that after we, you know, if you don't want to, we can address that next agenda topic. I will answer that question for you.
Oh, fabulous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Shay.
Who's next, Mr. Murphy?
Bethany is next. Bethany, if you could state your name and address for the record.
Yes, my name is Bethany Chatterley, Victory Highway, Coventry. My question about the air quality and the ventilation system is, as many have described, this is obviously not a new issue. And so I'm just trying to grasp and understand why it is such a factor as we discuss this upcoming school year. It absolutely needs to be addressed, upgraded, corrected. However, when we speak about other types of schooling, such as daycares, they did not address ventilation systems, they did not bring in UV lights or any of those things. They resorted to more cleaning, more distancing, if possible, not always possible, and different measures, hand washing, for instance. And there have not been any outbreaks, and people who did not feel like sending their children back, it was not comfortable or a safe environment, chose not to. You're giving that choice. So why is there such a difference between the daycare systems and the public school systems when it comes to air quality?
All I can say, Bethany, is that I, you know, four weeks ago, we were just thinking opening windows, right? That was what was recommended. This was brought to our attention. Like I had said, I don't want to, you know, keep on repeating myself, but two weeks ago, it was recommended that we have somebody come in and look out at our buildings. And as everybody knows, or I shouldn't say, but the assumption is, if you've been in our schools, you see that we have 1960s, 1970s, 1980s, we have 1948 section. So we're doing what we believe is right, and we're not saying that we're going to wear, you know, masks, washing hands, social distancing, but as you're going to see, you know, later on in our next discussion, the standard's been moved from six to, even this expert was saying six, but 10 feet's even better, to now, that standard's being walked back in terms of social distancing in a classroom. So this was brought to our attention, we're doing, you know, we have concerns, and I have concerns about air quality specifically to COVID-19. And so it's easy to put masks on, it's easy to make sure people wash their hands, but we want to make sure that the other conditions in our building are also conducive to, to a safe environment. And again, we didn't go looking for this, this was brought to our attention, and we're doing something about it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bethany. Okay, up next is Ann Marie. Ann Marie, if you could state your name and address for the record and unmute your mic. Yes, we can hear you. Ann Marie, you're muted again. If you could unmute your mic.
I'm sorry, thank you. I'm a big supporter of the schools, I'm a big supporter of the teachers. I have lots of friends that are teachers. And I know a lot of parents are interested in volunteering in the school system to help with the dress of the teachers, but in, in terms of the air quality, we know it's a continuous problem. But personally, and I know some of, several friends of mine have agreed, I've kept my sons at home. I don't let them out into the public, I haven't let them go to the beach. I mean, we, we've done things within our family, we have our, you know, our small little group, so my kids not, have not been exposed to COVID, yet at the same time, I've prevented them from being exposed to COVID. And my point being is that if parents shelter their children in, and if the families became more responsible, because you hear about a lot of people not being responsible, then the air quality wouldn't be so big of a problem, because the kids going into the school system wouldn't be carriers. And my point is that you can't count on just the air quality to be the basic issue. I have a child that needs services, and I have a child who's a senior, and they need to go back to school. One needs to graduate and get college credits and do all of the, fulfill all of his promise that he's been working so hard for the last three years. And I have another child who needs to be around his friends, his students, he needs to be challenged, he needs to be engaged, and these kids need to go back to school. And if it's hybrid, I'll be more than happy, but distance learning did not cut it in the end for my child, even though academically he did well. It took a huge psychological toll, which has taken him the whole summer to recover from. And my other child, who's going to be a senior, is extremely anxious about graduating and getting into a good college, because SATs aren't happening, and all of this other stuff. So I'm just saying, if parents take some responsibility, and I know they are, if they vocalize the fact that we're not being irresponsible and we're keeping our kids at home, the air quality shouldn't that, be that big of an issue. That's it.
Thank you, Ann Marie.
And I, I just want to say, Ann Marie, that I'm not, I, I think I can, well, I can only speak for myself, that we're going to take all the other steps that we can, you know, in terms of ensuring safety, but this is one area that, again, was brought to our attention, and we're going to try to do whatever we can do in the shortest period of time to make sure that all of our environments are safe. And there's no desire on, on anybody's part to start the year, or even get, you know, get into the year like we ended the year. And we'll talk about that next, but we feel that this is, you know, a necessary step, but it's just something that we will overcome, so that we can bring back, however it looks for our high school and middle school students, whether it's a hybrid model, is the best we can do. But that's our goal, to do that.
Right. Can I ask a quick question?
Shorter period of time, so air quality is something, though, that I need to address.
When, when was the evaluation done by that private TIES group that you hired?
Private, we just started that today, quickly. I, I don't know if you heard earlier on my presentation, but we, we, we've been trying for a week to get somebody over a week, and we were able to start today, so.
So you just had someone come in and look at the school? Okay.
Just a couple of schools today, but we're going to have a comprehensive feasibility study. But as I said before, we're trying to get as much information as we can in a shorter period of time, so that we can free up as much space as possible, that we know is, is going to be safe to return students to.
Yeah, but I guess my point is that every parent has to make a decision for their own children. And I've been reading online about how a lot of parents are saying, well, we don't have enough factors in place to make an educated decision. However, you're explaining to me that you just got a secondary place to do an evaluation, but you've had all summer, and I'm not, not trying to sound critical, but we're kind of already behind the ball.
But, 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 Ann Marie, let me just say that we've been dealing with this, and again, I can't control what people tune into or not, but we've been talking about this for over a month. We've been talking about our financial issues too, which are crucial, which we'll talk about after we make our recommendation. But I can tell you, I, you know, people have been working around the clock, and as soon as this issue came forward, we brought it forward to the community, to the school committee, and we've been trying to address it, and we are able to. You know, I wish I knew about it six, eight weeks ago, and I wish we had the money to do it six or eight weeks ago.
Could we use any money from the Capital Improvements Fund or the Emergency Rainy Day Fund? There's, there's got to be a way of.
Yeah.
Leaning into the town a little bit.
Well, you know what? I mean, I, I don't even want to go there. I'm just saying is that we are, we are doing the best that we can, and.
Oh, I'm not saying that you're not.
No, no, what I'm saying is that I, I, we will, and I'm not going to use this as a barrier, to stop phasing students in, you know, we'll discuss that when we get to our next agenda item.
Okay.
Madam Chair? Madam Chair? Madam Chair? Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Murphy.
Could I ask Mr. Levis two questions?
Sure.
Mr. Levis, you, you were not aware of this until you went to ASMS, a school in Providence, am I correct?
How did you get on the microphone?
Until that presentation took place, we were not aware of the severity of, the role that air quality played, yes.
And when was that?
A month ago, I'd say, over a month ago. I don't have the date in front of me, but.
Okay, that's okay. And Mr. Levis, every year we make proposals to the council. And Mr. Levis, every year, we make proposals to the council on things that we need. Last year was the first year they ever gave us money, correct? And we gave them the proposals this year for what we needed. And it just wasn't even considered.
Yeah, I can't tell you if it was considered or not. But, you know, in terms of air quality, I just want to go back to say, I think we're doing the best, we are doing the best that we can. And we're going to not use it as a barrier, something that we can overcome in time.
Thank you, Mr. Levis. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Steve.
You're welcome.
Madam Chair, may I just make a comment quick on this issue? I just, I wanted to bring this up because I know we have a large public forum. But just for those who have not been tuned in, there is a school building committee in process. We are in the middle of a stage two process with RIDE to look at our buildings. We had a stage one already. That happened approximately six to eight months ago, where we did look at a lot of different aspects of the buildings, a lot of the things that we've been aware of, air quality being one of them. And we're continuing that process. We are looking at it. But this is something we've known for a long time. We've obviously, you know, we have known about it from a general sense that air quality has been an issue. But I think that in light of COVID and through that lens, it's been very difficult because it's been a moving marker. So originally, it was, "Don't wear masks." Then it was, "Everyone should wear masks." And we all have gone through this together. So I think this is an extremely dynamic situation. I'm as frustrated as anybody. I know the tendency is going to be to say, "How come you didn't know about this sooner? You had all year to plan for this." The truth is, we didn't. You know, we've always known air quality is an issue. But the truth is, is that until we've kind of, the CDC has pinpointed that aerosol transfer is an issue and the distances, you know, we get the information as it comes too, sometimes through a press conference like today. So I just want to iterate that. For those who want to be involved moving forward, I highly encourage it because this has been an ongoing issue for years that could have been, quite frankly, addressed five or 10 years ago in many of our schools. But it hasn't because there has been a lack of, you know, overall capital funding and investment. So it's on the radar. And that's really what I wanted to say, and air quality is part of that. And we're in the middle of the school building process. We have meetings almost set up every week coming up. So if you wanted to tune in, stay involved, and the agendas are posted. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. Okay, who's left, Mr. Murphy? Melanie, you are next. If you could just state your name and address for the record and unmute your mic.
Hi, Melanie. My address is 7 Clover Drive, Coventry, Rhode Island. And my question is, can you please tell us what model the students are going to either return in? Are you doing full distance learning, partial? I know many parents, including myself, have been waiting for this dire answer. I need to let my own school district know tomorrow what I'm doing, and I can't even let them know when Coventry hasn't released their plan yet.
Melanie, that's going to be discussed in the next agenda item. We're still on air quality and questions and comments about the air quality. But we will get to answer your questions.
That will be discussed this evening?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Murphy. Next is C. Ducharme.
Hi, this is Cassandra Ducharme, 11th Avenue. If I'm the last person, then this is kind of a moot point. But as the actual committee, can we, can you take a motion from the floor to table this until after the next agenda item? Because like the last person just said, every parent is on here to learn what we're doing. And yes, air quality control is definitely a huge issue within our school system. But knowing what our kids are doing is a bigger issue.
Thank you. We don't typically limit our attendee comments unless they're redundant. And I think most people, I think we have three more hands raised. So I think we're going to try to finish with those three and then move on. I would hate to just not give them a chance. So Mr. Murphy, could you let the next attendee ask or comment? Sure. Up next is Michael. If you could unmute your mic and state your name and address for the record. Michael? Okay, we're moving on to Carrie. Carrie, if you could state your name and address for the record and unmute your mic.
Hi, my name is Carrie Landry. My address is 21 Circlewood Drive. I just wanted to take a moment to extend my appreciation to Mr. Levis and to the school committee for doing their due diligence in hiring a third party to look at the air quality in our schools. I teach at the middle school, and I've been pretty public about it. I was actually on Channel 10. I was interviewed about the air quality in the schools. And speaking from my own experiences, there is a lot of mold in my classroom. I know, I think it was Anne Benzo had just mentioned how she works at Western and has encountered the same thing. When I cleaned out my classroom two weeks ago to empty things, I had to throw out a lot of things because it was covered in mold. But I'm speaking as a teacher, but then also as a parent. And I'm a parent of two kids that are at the high school. One's a freshman and one's a senior. And I have to say that the quality of, like, the school buildings definitely does affect, like, how quickly viruses spread. I know some parents have put, and some people have commented about, "Well, what about flu season? It's not any different." Last year, I had quite a few kids in my class that were sick all the time, constant. It was a constant battle. And my own kids, the two that are left in school, were born five weeks premature. And so they're more susceptible to respiratory issues, so I understand that. But they struggled too, so they got a lot of, you know, sicknesses. But I guess the last thing I just wanted to say is, you know, I know there's a lot of concern about the social-emotional well-being of kids. And I have to say that, you know, my kids weren't excluded from that. My kids definitely, you know, my youngest especially, because he's more social, really struggled in that aspect. But I think we also have to be a little forgiving in the sense that, you know, as a country and as a world, you know, the entire world, we are going through a pandemic, and that was the beginning of everything. So it's kind of, I don't want to say a natural response to a very unnatural kind of thing, but it is, there is truth in that. And so when we return to the schools, which I can't wait, you know, for life to be back to normal, it does sadden me a bit to realize that, you know, like, my classroom is never going to be the same as it was before when, you know, March 12th, March 13th, when we ended the school year and went to distance learning. So I guess it was more of a comment. The social-emotional needs of kids is super important. The air quality is equally important. Teachers, staff, administrators, we all deserve just the opportunity to breathe clean air. So that was all I wanted to say.
Thank you, Carrie.
Thank you.
Mr. Murphy, I see a fun hand. Yes.
I think we already addressed that.
She has raised her hand again. Okay, Shay, you are up again. If you could state your name and address for the record and unmute your microphone.
Well, I just had a concern that, I mean, a lot of parents aren't aware until this very moment, the concerning of the level of mold. I mean, if that alone is an issue in itself, is that going to be really taken care of in the next two weeks before these kids start? I mean, as a parent, I have a daughter who has an autoimmune disorder. And a person who has asthma myself, it doesn't sound like these schools are to where they need to be. And I know, as a resident over 60 years with family and a student myself, this has been an issue for a very long time. And it sounds like very, very something that's been put off and that needs to be handled. I think you guys, I just needed to state that, are doing your due diligence to address this now and move forward. You know, we can't just tear down and build a new building for every school level we need. But you guys are doing a tremendous job. And, you know, it's because of past actions and putting things off that these things weren't addressed. And now with something like COVID, it has to be brought to the table and addressed even more. So you guys are doing a terrific job. And, you know, just hopefully, we can come up with a good answer to have these kids in a safe environment in all aspects. So I know that's you guys' goals, and I just want to say thank you for what you're doing.
Thanks, Shay. So I just want to say, when we've had incidents of mold, and last year, we had the ransomware attack and our system went in, we had the entire middle school building mitigated by a professional company. We've had pockets, and we've addressed that. We're addressing that in our stage two concerns. But just so you know, that we have our air quality tested. We have an incidence. We'll have a company come out. While we have some, in some buildings, issues with humidity and ongoing, we do have, you know, once we clean the area and we're talking about things that typically happen over the summer. For instance, we purchased, I believe, four industrial dehumidifiers this year for our middle school because we have these issues every single summer. And it sounds like there's issues that take place at West. But I can tell you, we have our air quality tested on a regular basis. And that's why I stress air quality. I'm not saying we don't have issues. But in terms of, if we had air quality that was determined unsafe, we would have had to close schools down. Fortunately, what happened a couple of times has happened in the summer. But this is a different type. Our concern here, and again, I don't want to, you know, I've said this over and over again, it's air quality pertaining to COVID-19 and how the disease is the airborne transmission. And so that's what we're talking about specifically tonight. The other situations, they're long-term situations. We're not looking to, I'm not looking to fix them in a week or two weeks. So just wanted to state that to everybody.
And, Mr. Levis, I agree and understand what you're saying. I just know that with having cases of mold, it does suppress people's immune system, which with something like COVID, could, you know, make these kids more susceptible. So now parents are like, "But, you know, we have to weigh the good, the bad, and take it all and do what we need to do." So you guys are doing a terrific job.
Thanks, Shay.
Thanks, Shay. All right. I was going to say, I thought we could move on, but I see one more raised hand, Mr. Murphy. We have one more. Mary Ann, you are up. If you could state your full name for the record and your address and unmute your microphone. Mary Ann? Mary Ann, can you unmute your microphone? Okay, I think we're going to move on, Mr. Murphy. She can also maybe address something in the next agenda item if she sees fit. That being said, I think everybody for their questions and comments, I appreciate the discussion. I'm sure all of us appreciate, the school committee appreciates all your concerns and comments. And now for the item that everybody is here for, number 13, the Coventry Public Schools reopening plan update. Mr. Levis, I'm going to let you start this.
Sure. So I mean, I think we've talked about a lot. We're going to talk after this about the budget. And just some questions people have asked me. Again, I'm not in your situation with young children and planning. And I'll acknowledge that. What I'm going to say is, if we were forced to make a decision, a couple of weeks ago, there was a conversation that took place at a school committee meeting. And I'm going to say, if we were forced to make a decision at that time based on things that we don't know, in a funding, the recommendation would have been to do distance learning, which is nothing anybody wants to do. Right or wrong, I haven't felt backed into a corner. I appreciate the opportunity to make a recommendation to the school committee. You know, we have been, I just want to say to the staff, our educators, our support staff, our administrators have been working tirelessly throughout the summer. There's a lot of negativity at times, you know. After partnership created distance learning, I thought we would overcome that. But then the stress of this, and I get it, wears on everybody. But people have been working tirelessly to come up with our plans, no matter, you know, what we start and where we end up. And I want to thank, you know, our school community for all of their support and many of the parents, you know. We're not going to please everybody. There may be very few people at the end of the day. But there's been so much, you know, dialogue, comments. I receive lots of emails, I know as the committee goes. And there are both sides, you know? So I just want to say that. The other part I want to say is that, you know, I'm sorry it's taken so long to, you know, get a consultant in. But there's a lot of challenges. A lot of people are looking at, making, you know, looking at air quality, even though I'm not sure how many districts are doing what we're doing. But I'm proud that we are doing this. Again, this is not a barrier. This is, for us, it's an ongoing process to find more and more, you know, reasons to bring more and more students back. I just want to address quickly the governor today. You know, I've said all along, I think we've said, and I think, you know, I don't want to pour it to Mr. Pearson's mouth at all. But in terms of some of those metrics, they're really for us to discuss and make a decision to get this green light at the state level. We understand, you know, everything that's been said tonight by our community. I understand. I understand the social-emotional piece. I understand having families where some students did well, liked distance learning, others hated it, wanting to get it back to as much as normal as possible. And I just want to commit to our community that we are going to do that as quickly as we can. So we're going to present, I'm going to present to the school committee a plan that, to start, that we phase in. And then our goal is to, you know, and I know the governor set a date around Columbus Day, but we want to find a way to make sure that we can get, you know, elementary students back. We want to find a way to get our high school, our middle school students back. But there are hurdles. I just want to know that. And at some point, as we do this, we'll present to the committee, we're going to have to throw some of these guidelines that the CDC and other individuals have put out there by the wayside, such as six feet or even three feet. And we'll talk about that later. So I'm going to present tonight what we believe is our starting point on September 14th. And again, we'll meet again next school committee meeting. And my goal is that we can find ways of getting our other populations in by October 14th. But there's a lot of variables to that. And, you know, I know people don't like that, but that's our truth. That's what we're experiencing. The air quality, we have a lot of spaces I'm concerned about, as Ms. Landry brought up, and others, the middle school, we have a lot of interior spaces at the high school that we don't have an answer for. And as I believe it was Nicole had indicated, that maybe there's individual units we can use. You know, at the end of the day, we still are going to need to be able to fund these. And, you know, I have no problem working with the committee to talk to the towns on specifics when we need some funding. But so anyways, Mr. Murphy, I'm going to ask you to put up, you know, I don't have a lengthy presentation. Mr. Coward, please jump in and help me out here. And then we'll open it up to questions. So I think, Mr. Murphy, you have our presentation. If not, it's just two slides.
Yep, give me just one moment.
Okay. And like we said, we're going to start small and phase in. And our goal will be to address the needs of populations, you know, by October 13th. But again, I can't tell you tonight what that's going to be. But again, I can't tell you tonight what that's going to look like. And I know people want those answers, but there's still a lot more we have to do with the middle school and the high school. All right. So this is what we're recommending to start on the fourteenth. So if you think about, we have twenty-five percent of the population that's requested for distance learning. What we want to do is, and again, the governor talked about starting off small. There's, there's, there's some great questions or comments I made about students understanding the routines. What we wanted to do was to start off with our pre-K and kindergarten programs and then look at all of our special programs such as, and again, SCORE, STRIVE, the Bridge Program. And this is at every building level we're talking about. Our intensive special education programs, our life skills, our transition. We want to focus on our English language learner population, our, our CLA at the high school. And then we're also looking at, you know, again, some special education, different special education populations. So we're looking at our special groups. We're also looking at CTE programs that require direct instruction, assessment, certification. And this is what we're talking about, our initial transition. This will have students in our high school. We plan on moving middle school programs to our high school right now. And that's why we're getting this consultant in this week to look at spaces. We believe that we can make this work in, in, in every building right now. And it also allows us to get students in every building except for the middle school because we have too many unknowns without having her go in. And it allows us again to grab, to do a baseline. Our transition to full return, now, need to let, you know, we met with RIDE. We presented this to the Department of Ed. These programs we're talking about would be Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. As it seems now, we're still looking for Monday for, for, for distance learning. We know RIDE has several Mondays. We also know there's some Monday holidays, but we're also looking at for a way for us, for people to catch up and also to do some deep cleaning. Our transition to full return, and again, there's, there's many variables that are still out there, such as, you know, we presented a budget for full return. We've also talked about, you know, again, air quality. I know some people are saying it's not a reason. We're going to be doing everything else that we need to do, such as social distancing, wearing masks, wearing the proper PPE for, for staff. But we also want to phase in grades one to five and then look at the hybrid for grade six to twelve. And again, I, I need more information about, we need, you know, the fully implementing a hybrid for grades six to twelve is going to require on our space. And again, tonight, I don't know the answer to a lot of the interior classrooms, which we have significant number at the high school and, and, you know, the concerns that we have about, about the middle school. We also are putting in contingencies for safety, as I think it was Kristen DeDuce has talked about, you know, the policy, but we're going to have comprehensive protocols that we'll share with everybody about safety, how we're going to mitigate. You know, if we identify a staffer or a student, it doesn't necessarily mean the whole school's going to close down. There are detailed plans in terms of the response for our nurses and contact tracing in terms of seating charts and knowing who's, you know, who's been in contact with whom. You know, we also need to look at staffing that because we're having a distance learning model, that's going to require staff. But we also are going to require those teachers to be in front of our students. We also have questions around, you know, critical staff. If people get sick or they're, they're not able to come in, shortages. I know the governor's response, and we'll talk about this Thursday, was to have National Guard support us. But these are things that are ongoing that we need to work, work around towards our, our full return. Funding is a major issue. I, I, you know, I know there's a lot, I get a lot of people saying I'm a taxpayer and, you know, and I'm a taxpayer too. But as a taxpayer, for me, and I can only speak for myself, it's much more than, than writing a check. It's being involved and engaged continuously. And I know not everybody has that, that level, but funding is a major issue. It's been a fight ever since I've been here. Maybe one, one year when we implemented all-day K, it wasn't a battle. But things are only getting worse. Our, our state's having an eight hundred million dollar shortfall, you know? But I can only focus on Coventry right now. You know, we don't have a budget. We're looking, working off one twelfth of last year's appropriation. So as of tomorrow, we'll be working off three twelfths of that. Our state aid's been cut by nine percent and we're getting that, you know, on a month-by-month basis. We probably won't have a state budget till late September, October. These all impact our ability, whether, you know, people agree with it or not. I can tell you these impact our ability to open. You know, the recommendations we're going to get for air quality is going to be, air quality is going to be, you know, there's some cost to it. And right now, we can say we don't have the funding, right? And I'm not using that as excuse. We will do everything, anything we can do to, to, to mitigate whatever areas of concern are presented to us about our classrooms. But then the state and CDC guidelines, you know, again, we'll probably do a, a report, I believe, more detailed to the school committee next Thursday about, you know, what the state and the guidelines have been. But in terms of our, our reality to get to a full return, there's going to have to be some compromise. As individuals have said, you know, this is all about compromise. Where do we compromise on safety? Like somebody had said, you know, now, you know, outdoor tents are, are a great idea, but, you know, we're compromising safety unless we hire a detail or, you know, I mean, and I'm not saying we're going to do that, but those are valid points that we need to take into consideration. All right, the next slide. So we were trying to get our building-based plans. And again, those plans are about different phases, but we're trying to get those posted today. And again, I want to thank our educators and our administrators and support staff for working on those throughout the summer. We've been conducting building walkthroughs with our administrative team, looking at classroom layout, looking at the assurances that we've agreed to with our re-entry planning document and template that we've agreed to, looking at signage throughout the building. And again, I know there are smaller districts that have had this up and running. We, we're, we're still in the process of doing a lot of electrical work. Remember, the committee remembers that we were able through National Grid to get a, our, not only lighting, but also to get the fixtures at a minimal cost through National Grid that'll help us in terms of long-term savings on energy. And that works going on right now. So we have a lot of moving parts. You know, we're working, as I mentioned before, with Creative Environment Corporation, ventilation expert. And again, I'm not looking for the gold standard. We just want, I want to know, are these rooms safe? That'll help us implement our, our, our full return quicker. But if there are areas that we find out that we can't, you know, we need to think about that. If I can only bring so many students even in a hybrid model, because we still need the space in the classrooms, we're going to need to think about, how do we, how creative can we be in November or December if there are long-term solutions with, you know, I don't think we can use tents in November or at least in December. So we're going to have to be creative. And we're not saying we're not going to do that, but we need to know what we're up against. Transportation, you know, we're going to be able to slowly move ourselves into transportation, but don't forget, we send surveys, but it doesn't mean the surveys are always, always accurate. Until we get into a situation, you know, we're not going to know right now how many people are going to be on the bus. You know, right now, we're looking at, you know, trying to figure out how many buses we need. Will there be savings early on that'll help us later on? These are things that we're trying to consider. As I mentioned before, we have a meeting with our, the state's emergency operations team. There are two teams, they're made comprised of three members, and they're going to go to every single school. And these will be our point people if we have a problem. And like I said, we're going to lay it on them this Thursday with everything we're, we're facing right now and see, you know, what the process is. You know, again, we have staffing concerns. If we fully open, I'm concerned about the number of custodians that, that we have and that we need. I know there was a lengthy conversation about how it's not sustainable, but we need to make sure that we can sanitize and clean those areas. You know, in the short term, we might be able to move people around, but in the long term, and our plan is to open every building, that's going to be a concern that we have that we'll present to the, the committee again, you know? I'm not even talking about the bodies. I'm talking about the funding that we're going to need to add those additional custodians. Nursing support, it's been brought to our attention that we can look at CNAs. We discussed this. I had a great meeting with our nurses today. And again, I want to thank them for meeting. They didn't have to come on a meeting today. They've been meeting every single week throughout the summer. So we're looking at, could we do a combination of RNs and maybe CNAs? You know, I was brought to attention that maybe other districts aren't looking at additional nursing staff. And, you know, my attitude is that if a nurse goes down in a building, we may have to shut down if they're a point person, if we can't replace them. And that may sound ridiculous, but we need, they're a crucial part of this new world that we're part of. And we're knowing that even if we have a hybrid model at our high school that has seven hundred and some odd students, and we have six hundred students maybe at the middle school, the fact of the matter is to expect a single nurse to mitigate potential virus and then to do everything else is, 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 is just not appropriate. And so, and we had that conversation again today. And so the other part, what I learned about CNAs is that they still have to work under nurses' orders. So they're limited in what they can do. They still need to be supervised. But we're trying to be creative. And again, no decisions are being made tonight, but I wanted to know, these are the ongoing concerns that we have, and as we move towards full return, something we're going to have to address. We're also looking at distance learning instruction. You know, we'll be meeting tomorrow. We're, we're trying to figure out right now who, who can meet those needs. But at the end of the day, it comes down to a staffing issue. You know, we're still going to have to staff our classrooms and depending on the numbers and depending on the ultimate final distance learning, we still are going to have to make sure that we have both teachers in the classroom for those students coming to school and teachers that are going to address distance learning instruction. And it isn't as simple as saying, well, we have these teachers that can't come back. There's a lot more to this in terms of certification and, you know, our distance learning plans that are much more comprehensive. And then supplies, PPE and cleaning supplies, these are something that are ongoing. We believe we have a couple of months' supplies. You know, the Department of Ed and, and the governor's office has said if we need help, you know, to reach out to them. But unlike some other districts that have been able to go out and spend X number of thousands of dollars and buy six months' worth of supplies, we know that we weren't just in that, we're in that situation. So while we may have, you know, a month or two months of supplies, we're still going to fund those. And obviously, the more students we bring back into our schools, the greater the need is for these. And then finally, the budget is an issue, ongoing. So we'll be discussing the next agenda item. But I, I just want to be clear that we, we have addressed this with the Department of Ed. They understand that our goal is to phase in programs in, in grades. I don't want to go back to, you know, that's why today was so important and this week is so important with the, with a consultant to free up the spaces that we need to support these programs. But the goal is to get the okay to free up more space so we can bring in. You know, and, and Don and I are going to meet with the elementary principals later this week to really talk about what this phased in could look like. You know, we may have the opportunity to bring people, everybody back. We may have the opportunity to phase in a couple of grades at a time. A lot of it's going to be in terms of how many spaces we can free up in our, in our schools. I'm hoping that our elementary schools, they just, you know, get preliminary, and I'm not the expert. But to Mr. Murray's point, I think there are some things that we can do that will allow us to open spaces in our elementary schools sooner than later and to transition students in. We know there's a push from the governor, I get it, and from our families, they need to go back to work. You know, we had originally presented a hybrid model. But when we come back to you, we are going to be looking at some of those CDC guidelines that have been recommended, and we're not going to be able to support them in our elementary schools. You know, we measured some elementary schools today that were under seven hundred feet, square feet. So that's something that, you know, I'm going to present the committee. I would ask for your support, you know, in whether that's next week. But this is our initial plan to start off bringing in, except for the middle school programs into every building. We, we've identified, you know, programs and populations that we feel need additional support. Again, we hear the community loud and clear that we need to get everybody back in front of a teacher. And, and our plan will do that. But again, until I have an understanding of what we can use, you know, like for instance, I'll tell you, one quick thing is that we were in Tioga today and just from looking at the space and the type of ventilation and the fan that we have, it may be a good space where we could probably possibly put three classrooms. The, the challenge is in there, it's so loud with all those systems. I don't know how we would, you know, overcome the noise for instruction. So we'd have to figure that out. But if we found that there were three classrooms we couldn't use, it was an opportunity we could use that space. Is it ideal? No. Will we get there? I'm not sure. But that was the positive outcome of today, trying to be creative and look at our other spaces. So I'm sure there are going to be a lot of questions, but this is what we're proposing to the school committee to start on the fourteenth. Everybody else would be on, on distance learning, and then we would phase those groups in as soon as we can. But the goal is getting many, as many groups in front of teachers by the thirteenth. Prioritizing obviously elementary, but, you know, if we can, again, you can't, I can't be held to this because I don't know, but if we could get our sixth grade in, if we could identify that that wing is, 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 you know, we can get signed off on that, we could get our sixth graders in, in a hybrid model. And, you know, we, we're willing, we met with the high school today and visited and there's a willingness. And as you heard, Ms. Aronakis and other teachers say, they want to get in front of their students. We want to do it safely, but, you know, nowhere have we said we just want to do distance learning year round. We believe this is the safest way to start. It'll also build some confidence in our buildings. Again, I, I'm leaving the middle school out because there's too many unknowns, but that could change next week, so.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Levis. I'm going to start asking for questions in common. I'll start with Mr. Pearson.
Thank you to you and your team for putting this together. It answers some of the questions. It may not be as definitive, I think, as many parents are looking for, but I understand your, your consternation and your, your hesitation in putting out more until we know more. But we're running out of time, so this, I would urge you as, as quickly as we gain new information and set new milestone dates that we communicate those out to parents and staff as expeditiously as possible. Other than that, I don't think I have any additional questions at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Pearson. This is Kalunian. So we're starting off distance learning, is that what I'm hearing?
So we're starting off bringing these populations back, pre-K, kindergarten, all those special populations will be in every, the goal is, and, and, you know, I, I was, you know, again, pleading with, with Mrs. Ready to help us find ways to make our space use, you know, usable. I'm not looking to say we can't use a space and, you know, we're going to do distance learning and we'll come back and revisit it in January. And I think Mr. Murray had brought this up before, another school committee meeting about, we may make a decision today, but then we'll have new information that'll inform our decision. This is going to be continuous reflective process. But we know we need to get students into schools and we felt this is the safest way to start. We're addressing, you know, the Department of Ed. We had met with a couple of individuals, Department of Ed, and we talked about this plan. But as long as we're, our intent is to keep building on this. And, you know, again, we're going to talk about budget afterwards because that has, you know, we still have major concerns and, and impact. But we felt this is the best way to start, safely getting people used to the building. You know, and so, no, we're not just starting distance learning, but a majority. So we figured twenty-five percent of so far of the individuals have chosen distance learning. So, you know, we were trying to figure out the numbers because part of this is if, if the school committee supports it, we'll be reaching out to all these individuals to make sure, especially the special populations, to make sure they understand what we're going to do and that they'll commit to it. But, you know, we're looking at, this will address probably about forty percent of our, you know, that population to start, but our goal would be to get the elementary students back. But our goal would be to get the elementary students back in and then to really work on creating the hybrid. But there's too many variables right now. And again, we'll be coming back, talking about our full, whether it's hybrid or not. We need, you know, at the secondary level, we're still going to need additional custodial staff. Still need to figure this nursing piece out, so. But no, it's not just distance learning. We're starting off with small population, then we'll transition.
That's what I heard, but I, you know, I just, I wanted to, um, to get that. And when you talk about, we're bringing, obviously, the elementary level, they, and the special education and that, they really need to get back into the school. Um, when you talk about like the high school and middle school, are you going to do a hybrid where, you know, they have two days of distance learning, two days of, see, you, you know, you don't have everybody in the school at the same time and?
Yeah, that was, I mean, that was our plan. And don't forget all along, the, the push from Department of Ed was to get our elementary students in. And they were okay with us doing that. At one point, recommendation was, you know, if we need to just keep the middle school, you know, students or the secondary students on distance learning, that was okay. Our goal is, we recognize all along, we, we've discussed this at our task force, that students need to be in front of their teachers. But this is our current reality, you know, and our current reality is we feel this is the best way for us to start. And we're hoping we get additional information. And we'll talk about the budget part after this, but.
Well, I know, and just to let you know, you, you all know, my son is a school teacher in Connecticut. And he is, he's going back in the classroom and what they're doing is he's going to be on camera for those who opted for distance learning full time. And for the other half of his students that are distance learning those days. So he'll be actually teaching three sets at the same time, technically, you know.
Yeah, so we had talked about that, but I'm going to be honest with you. If you, you know, especially looking at the teacher evaluation, best practice is not standing, you know, it's going to, our teachers are very mobile and active and working around. So, you know, we had discussed that some districts are going to do that, but there's so much that students at home are going to miss in that interaction. So we're trying to, that's why we felt it's important to separate the two. You know, it, it sounds good and it's, you know, it's, it's probably easier to do. But we, we felt it's important to have dedicated teachers to the distance learning process, so.
Can I just jump in with some clarifying comments?
Sure.
So, um, because there's a lot of questions in the chat, and I just want to try to address them because we have a lot of people also raising their hands. And there's a lot of things I could probably say at once that will help some people get the answers that they're looking for. So in terms of the elementary, we're going to start with the pre-K and the K. Monday is still going to be a distance learning day. They're going to be in school Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. Our next phase would be first, second, third, or first, second, depending. And the reason why I say depending is because there's a lot of changes to our protocol. There's a lot of changes to our procedures. There's, we're using different entrances, different exits. The bathrooms are being marked off differently. There's so many different layers of things that are happening. Bringing too many people at one time could be actually more problematic and more disruptive than helpful. But the goal is to get all the kids at the elementary level back into full distance, full in-person learning, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, by the deadline that the governor gave in October. If we can go first through third, then fourth and fifth, we will have two phases of bringing those kids back. And that will go as quickly as we possibly can. I know for parents, that's challenging because how do you plan for not knowing for certain that it's going to be in two weeks? But I think what's going to happen is we're probably going to know fairly soon what, how things are going, and we'll be able to communicate to people, here's what's going to happen in two weeks. And then be able to communicate to people, here's what's going to happen in the next two weeks. And get all those elementary kids back in by that deadline. At that same deadline, which is in October, then we're going to have all the middle school and the high school kids back into hybrid. And that's going to be the Monday off, and then they're either going to have a Tuesday, Thursday, or a Wednesday, Friday schedule. There's been a few questions in the comment section about special education students. And, and, and this, all the special education programs that we have, our intense programs are going to be in session starting in September on the first day of school. We're looking at two different things. Our, our middle school kids and our high school kids are absolutely going to be at the high school. We have the most space for them to spread out. We went to that building today. We walked the building. We marked off the rooms. We're able to locate the kids all together in one place. There's a lot of things that we're, we're looking at. For elementary, it's a little bit more, I don't want to say wait and see because that sounds so indecisive. But if we can get the, the consultant to come in and say, this room is good, this room's good, this room's good, this room's good at the elementary level, then we can push our elementary kids into the schools they belong in, and there'll be fewer transitions for them. So the, really, the goal is to get them into their home schools. We just want to make sure all the rooms that they are in are appropriate and ready to go. That's, that's the priority, that they're safe. So the special education kids, then there was a question about the CTE. So the CTE is going to have a, a schedule that's going to allow those kids that are in the programs that are the most hands-on, the ones that have the highest requirements in terms of hours for certifications, they're going to be in. But the focus in the beginning is going to be with 11th and 12th graders because those are the kids that are going to be graduating. And those are the kids that are most urgently in need of their hours so that they can get their certifications before they leave. And then I think the next phase, if we can get more CT kids, CTE kids, would actually be the ninth graders so that we can establish connections with them and get them rolling along, along into their programs. So that's still a priority. A lot of parents have been reaching out about CTE as well, you know, in terms of getting them in. So I don't know if that clarified things or made it more complicated, but I'm just trying to give people some of the answers because they're coming through on the chat. And then Shay Scott had jumped in and asked a question about building base plans. We have building base plans already built out and ready to go, and they'll, they'll be emailed out to the community tomorrow. And those are the specific plans for each school, which doors they go in, which hallways they're walking down, assurances around signage, locations for how lunch and recess are going to be handled, all the little specific things that parents want to know before they send their kids into school. We have a plan for each building. They had their own task force and they came up with their own process and procedure. As you can imagine, what happens in Western looks very different than what happens at the high school. So we, you know, instead of having one big gigantic generic plan, we went with building specific. Distance learning, we did a bigger plan. I know some people said, you know, it doesn't look that much different than last year. I, I would argue that it looks significantly different than last year. The things that we've included are way more, way more accountability and much higher expectations.
Oh, Don, so what I was hearing is, do you have a specific time period? Like you're going to, you know, start off and then two weeks later, sort of like what, um, are you going to do it, you know, like have a, a specific time period? Or is it just kind of like wait and see kind of a thing? We'll start here and then, you know, we'll see.
I, I think it's fair to the families and the community to have a time period. They need to plan for that. I just don't want to give people information to have them all locked in and then something changes and we have to pull the rug because that's very upsetting. But I think as a parent, it's most efficient for everyone to know when their day is, when their time is. I think bringing back one to five all at one time is a lot. It's a big shift in one move. It makes much more sense to be either one to three or one to two. And then third grade is kind of a tipping point, right? If we can pick up one to three, then the next phase would be four or five, and then everybody's in. If the K, the pre-K and the K is moving a little bit slower, or it's not exactly, you know, we don't have all the protocols exactly the way we like, we may just say it's a one to two. But we're definitely going to phase it in and we're definitely going to communicate it to the parents so they can plan appropriately.
Great. I, I appreciate that because I, I know as a parent, I would, I would definitely want that, you know? I want to know what, I'd have to plan.
Right. And one of the things the superintendent said, and I just want to reiterate, when we walked the buildings today, we went to the high school and two elementary schools. And we saw rooms that were set up for hybrid, which means half as many kids at a time, and rooms that were set up for full return, which means everybody's in there. And most of the, most of the rooms that are set up for hybrid can only handle 11 to 12 kids if you maintain six feet all the way around. And that's very difficult to do. And so when the superintendent mentioned, you know, going to ride or going to the governor or DOH and saying, you know, what are, what are the, what is, is there any leeway on the six feet? You know, a lot of that is, a lot of the contingency is built around us having some flexibility so that we can get more kids into those rooms.
Thank you.
Hopefully that clarifies things a little bit.
I, I think all my questions are answered. Kathy, you can move on.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Kalunian. Thank you, thank you, Don, for answering some of those questions that were in the chat, in the Q and A. I just want to let some people know, I think they're wondering why we're not answering some of these questions. It's, we're trying to listen to each other, the presentations, and any attending questions. So that's very difficult to be distracted and try to answer the questions. So I would ask that maybe Mr. Kalunian, on this, on this, if you can be jotting down some of those and maybe have those Q and As answered, maybe on the website or something. That would be, that would make some people feel a little bit better. I don't know if that's going to be a possibility, but because it's kind of hard to, to get it all down. I certainly get too distracted trying to answer something and still attend to this meeting. So I just wanted the participants to know that's the reason why we're not only answering it. It's just way too much. We can't, we can't do that much, that, all that in one, during one meeting. So I do apologize for not individually answering for the school committee members and for the superintendent and for the assistant superintendent. Okay, so the next person is Mr. Murray. So Murray, any questions, concerns, comments?
Thanks for the presentation, Don. Thanks for answering some of those pointed questions that I think a lot of people out there have. I know I have. So if I can ask a couple more pointed questions. In this scenario, what does transportation look like? We have, um, we haven't mentioned that. We've talked about it broadly.
Yeah, so there's definitely a few layers to that. What the elementary principals have done have, is looked at the different surveys that we've sent home and identified the people that are not going to take advantage of transportation. And then they've gone out and mapped out which kids are going to be taking the buses and knowing who's going to need transportation. And originally, when we were looking at hybrid as being like our all-in approach, we had one bus scenario sort of worked out. But we're kind of switching a little bit, at least at the elementary level initially. So we need to kind of circle back with Jason and map that out. I know that when you subtract out the 30%, or 25% of the people who have asked for distance learning, and then, then go back and compare that to the people who have already said, I'm going to bring my children back, but I'm going to provide my own transportation. We're transporting probably closer to 60 to 70% of our kids versus 100%. We're actually hoping that's a little bit lower when we get down to the really, really hard specifics because the last, the last I heard, the, the buses were supposed to be moving 36 people at a time. But that's why when we start with a pre-K, K, and then eventually a one, two, three, four, or five, we have the flexibility of focusing all our bus attention to just elementary. We don't have to do runs at all three levels. And then we'll have a, a bus run set up for the students who are going to go to the high school, whether it's for a specialized program or for CTE. So transportation is a little bit of a moving target. I'm not going to say we've got it nailed down. But this puts us a little bit closer to planning because now we know what we're shooting for.
All right. So would it be fair to say that we at least know that a bus will show up at a parent's house in pre-K or K?
Exactly.
On the day school opens?
So, yeah, and you bring up a really good point, Mr. Murray, because I don't want, and I apologize to cut you off. So there's a lot of parents in our community that are very actively involved and engaged in this whole process. We're fearful that some are not. We don't know that they're not, but just we're fearful that some are not. And, and I know that because I get questions either through email or whatever, and people are asking me things that are really, really general questions that we thought had been kind of communicated out. Either their email wasn't right in Aspen, so they weren't getting emails, or they weren't engaging in some of the meetings, or they just weren't, you know, too busy and they just couldn't connect. It's not, it's not a, a, a tick against them, but we are worried that there are some people we just haven't engaged. And so we really don't know what school's going to look like for sure until we start, right? And not, even when I was a principal at Washington Oak, there would be kids that showed up at the door that had, that weren't registered for school. Their parents just brought them, "I'm here for school." They didn't understand that there was a whole process that had to happen. We're fearful that there are some parents that are going to either show up or they're going to be at the bus stop with their kids, and they really weren't accounted for in our process because we're going to miss people. Like the next, we're not going to capture every single family. And so this gives us some time to sort of get our head around that and to kind of adjust where the adjustments need to be. So when we phase up to the next level, we're better prepared. Closing our eyes and crossing our fingers and thinking we've got it all worked out perfectly is, is going to be a recipe for disaster because I know there's some information and there's some data that's not rock solid.
Right. And, and no, I respect that. And I've said all along, I'm, I'm not opposed to ramping up kind of beta testing and doing a ramp up. My hope is that it would ramp up quickly if we can do it. Because I know there's a lot of parents who need in-person. But at least we're, we're putting something out there to start. Along those lines, I guess with communication, I think one of the things that I can, I digest from my perspective that's been lacking, and this is just part of administration's been caught in the minutia, is that I think clarity to parents just, you know, my bus is going to show up this day. In order to get the bus showing up that day, what do I need to do as a parent? To a granular level and nuts and bolts, because a lot of parents aren't engaged, frankly, or care about the process to get here. They just want to know they're there. And if they're not there, they need to be told clearly that we're not there, and they need to find other arrangements. And what are those arrangements? And I don't know if we've talked to the Y, or we've talked to CCA, or we've talked to West Bay, or we've talked to any other people about other supports. Because I know as a parent, what you want to know is, okay, is my kid in school? No. Okay, then what are my options? And I don't know if we've provided any other options, but I haven't heard any at this point. We've just told more than 50% of our population, they're going on distance learning. And I know a lot of parents out there right now are saying, all right, now, now what do I do? And I've said all along to parents, any parent I talk to, have a backup plan. My wife and I have three backup plans already. That's just the way it is because we know, we can't count on anything. So I just, if there's communication that we can put out that clarifies the process exactly which CTE programs are coming back. You know, what I heard on the pre-K, K, those are going to be in the elementary schools. I heard about the move up to high school for the special programs, but we're, we're expecting pre-K, K to be in the actual buildings.
So that's part of this analysis with the, um, the consultant coming in. We want to make sure that the rooms in those buildings are exactly where they need to be. Pre-K is not a question. They're all at Washington Oak, so that one's fairly easy. It's just really kindergarten at this point. You know, we have a backup plan, just like you and your wife. So if we can't get all the kindergarten kids in one building, in, in their separate buildings, then, you know, would we have to potentially put them in one building? We don't want to do that because it creates more transitions and more disruption, and it's difficult for kids and families to keep switching. So what we're trying to do is work with the consultant to kind of nail down the spaces, the, like, the, the, the primary spaces that we need to look at right away. You know, let's look at the special programs. Let's look at the kindergarten rooms. Let's look at the nurse's office. If those places are all good to go, let's get the kids into their home schools, into those spaces, and then we can continue to analyze the other rooms to make the adjustments that need to be made. But at least get the kids into their own schools. That's the goal.
All right. So the goal is try to stick in district. If we can't, absolutely can't, we're going to find space.
Right.
So when will we have that answer?
So I think a lot of it is based on the analysis that started today. And so by the end of the week, hopefully, we'll have a general sense. May not have a written report ready to share with the public, but I think we might have, and the superintendent can talk further on this. There may be some sort of verbal back and forth that gives us a little bit more comfort in knowing where we can move forward.
Right. That's exactly what we're doing right now, those special populations. And this was an ask from our elementary principals, and we're trying to make that happen as quickly as we can, looking at kindergarten classrooms, even looking at nurses' offices in those buildings to make sure that we have a space or that we can utilize so that when we start on the 14th, our goal is, our goal is so students can be in their home school, except for predominantly the, the middle school students who will put those programs at the high school. And Mr. Lucian's already met with Ms. May Cumber. We're going to have the consultant come in and look at certain spaces, but we're more comfortable with that. Just like the spaces we chose today, Mr. Martin and I met with the consultant and feel very comfortable that we'll be able to do whatever it takes to make that, that happen. But again, I can't tell you tonight exactly because we did two walkthroughs today.
So the hope is by the end of next week, just to summarize that point, the hope is maybe by the end of next week, we know where these kids are going to go?
I'm hoping before that. I'm, I'm hoping before that. You know, I'm hoping that when, before we come to a school committee meeting next week, we know where they're coming. Not hope, I'm, you know, like people say, I hope a lot of things, but hope doesn't, doesn't get us there. I believe that we'll be able to identify those spaces and everybody will know. That's, that's my belief, just based on today.
Okay. Yeah, I guess, I'm like, I'm like most people, right? I mean, I just happen to be a school committee member, but I, I still have a lot of questions myself, both as a parent and committee member. I've never masked the fact that the parent side of me is there, right? I think that gives me a little bit of introspective on how parents are feeling. The biggest thing I would say is, parents, including myself, just want to know what's going on. So I know you're doing the building business, I know you're doing your jobs, I know you're doing the day-to-day, but you've got to get more communication out there. I cannot express enough, just not putting things on Twitter, having a fact sheet. A simple fact sheet, just pointed, A, B, C. Your bus will show up, I guarantee it. Your pre-K, kindergarten are going back, exactly the slides you had, but clarified. It's going to take a lot of pressure off parents, not just off the administration, but off parents on knowing where they're going. And then if, I don't know if we're communicating, this is another question. Are we communicating with other organizations as far as parent support? Because I know there's some parents out there who are going to say, "I have to go to work. My child's seven or eight years old, and I can't, I don't have an option." Where do they find those options?
So I can tell you, and this isn't the first time anybody, I hope anybody that's tuned in, we've been working with the Y, Mike Norcal in the Westwood Y, trying to have some options. I was put in touch with the, you know, I'll talk about my ignorance. I had no idea that there's a territorial Y component in Coventry, that Kent County Y services one section of the town in Westwood. I'd been dealing with Westwood Y all along. And so recently, I was put in contact with the CEO of Kent County Y to look at their support. So we've been working with them. There are a lot of programs that we have in town that provide services that are, that are, numbers are extremely low and may go out of business. We've also talked about other options, but again, are any other options we can put in place has to do with having space that's appropriate. So as, as this information comes out, and I know it's needed a month ago, but again, I have a conversation with Mr. Norcal tomorrow in terms of, you know, what our first phase is and how he could support the Westwood Y. You know, so I know they're already, their camp is already extending the time. Running a camp, I think they've had, you know, 150 individuals and small groups of 10 outdoors. And they're going to extend that, I believe, through the 14th to support families right now. So, but you know, your point's well taken, but as soon as we have information, we will put it together and share it.
I know you guys are walking and chewing a lot of gum, and I, you know, I know it's just more on the list. It's just, again, it's, it's a lot of questions that parents have and are asking me. And, you know, it's like, I don't even have a place to direct them as a school committee member. I don't have a fact sheet to give to them. So I, I empathize with them, but you know, I'm not really geared up as a, as an elected official to be able to give them the answers they need and say, "Here's the support." That's very frustrating for me. I know you're very frustrated in going through the process. But, you know, not having that information, not being able to help people and get them through is very frustrating. And I'll, my last ask is, distance learning. I saw a plan come out last week, I know parents were asking. It's not on the list for tonight, I know we have more than enough on to, for tonight. But I know that's getting refined, but are we going to have a presentation on that? And then where does that go? Because I know a lot of parents, again, bullet point sheet, are asking like, "What's distance learning actually look like beyond the broad framework of a policy and what you put out?" I know there was some hours of instruction, but I think in people's minds, what does that actually translate to?
Yeah, so they, yeah, I think, I think you have a good question. So we're going to have to come forward and present a document that, our document, and maybe answer some of those questions. I think our goal was, Mr. Murray, was to get something out to the families that gave them a basic overview to help them with some decision-making because so many parents were saying that it was very difficult for them to take a survey, requesting or, or opting into distance learning without knowing enough about what distance learning was going to look like. So what we tried to do is create a blueprint for distance learning. It included the policy, included the expectations and the accountability. It included a building-by-building description of how things would be handled. There's some components in our re-entry plan also for the state. But I think it's a fair question to say, you know, how does it get delivered? How does the curriculum get handled at the very specific level? We didn't include that almost purposely. We tried to keep it so it was just a broad overview. So for parents, if they wanted to jump into distance learning, they had at least a starting point of what we had built out. But we definitely can present that, and if it needs clarity, then we'll get more clarity.
I think even, you know, we've talked about it before, I think we talked about it a month ago, or more, more than a month ago. You know, we said, "Well, wouldn't it be nice to have a walkthrough video," which some school districts have of what reopening looks like. But even on distance learning, modeling that for even a teacher of saying, and I don't know if we have this, but the same video could be used to model for a teacher as it would a parent of saying, "This is what it should look like, right? This is what we envision the framework to be." I think, you know, they say a picture's worth a thousand words, a video even more. But as a parent, to be able to log on and see a sample session of, okay, you're going to go on, and this is what it looks like when you get on Google, and this is how you achieve it. And this is what the teacher should be doing. They're on for a half hour and doing the homeroom instruction, whatever that is. I just find, and this is my own perspective, that would be enormously helpful to me as a parent. And I know clear up a lot of miscommunication, because I see a lot of miscommunication out there, and I see a lot of frustration. So I, and I'm not saying that's due to the work you're doing, I know you're working really hard. I think it's not getting it down to a basic level, granular level, where the average person works all day and comes home and just wants to send a kid back to school and understand it, grasp it, and be able to, to, you know, swallow it, for lack of a better term. So I believe, and I know there's a lot of people who have other questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. Finally, Mr. Florio, comments, questions?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll try to make this succinct. However, my concern is primarily with the most vulnerable populations of our school system going to school in a totally different environment than we went to, or that the kids before them went to. They're going to be required to wear masks. They're going to be required to do social distancing. We, it's very, it's anxiety-driven for kids. So talk about a social and emotional learning. This is, Mr. Levis, this is your specialty. And kids are going to be very anxious going to school under those circumstances. And that, that's one question. Is that going to be addressed? And I'm sure it is. I'm sure Mr. Coward and Amy and Mr. Levis have looked at that. The other piece is not only, not only the anxiety that a child that age has to go through. You remember, you remember as a parent, Madam Chair, when, I remember when we sent our little kid, you know, you send them off to school and, you know, they're anxious about leaving, leaving you, and they're like, "Bye, bye," and they're crying on the bus. And then I just want to make sure those kids, especially at that age, they're going to have some caring and empathy, that's all. And the other piece is, what happens, God forbid, if one of them does get sick? What do we do? Do we close down the school? Do we? I, if we have to isolate the child for 14 days, no question about it. But how do we respond to that? Does the nurse respond to that? Is, is the nurse going to be because of the virus? And you know how kids are, they drool, they, you know, they sneeze, they cough, they... How do we handle that? And those are my two questions, Madam Chair. That's it.
Thank you, Dave. Mr. Levis, did you want to answer that?
Just, just quickly, you know, in terms of the social, emotional, Dave, you know, we've talked about, we have that grant with the Rowell Foundation and myself and Ms. Tancrell. I met with Kayla David, who's from Family Service Rhode Island. And we talked about bringing it down, we supported staff and we've done trainings. We want to bring it down to the family level moving forward and looking at how can we facilitate groups or support our own people working with kids. So that's something that we, we talked about. We have another meeting, I think, this week to really look at that. Mr. Robillard's been a great resource. We know that we need to address those. As far as the protocol, you know, our nurses have done a phenomenal job working on their, their building teams, but we're going to be following protocols if somebody is, you know, somebody had asked before about screening, I think it was. You know, we're going to do the same thing with our students in terms of asking families to fill out a protocol through Aspen. And, you know, asking those same questions that we all have to ask if you go to a doctor's office. Some, you know, "Have you been in contact? Have you had a fever?" There'll be a checklist. And, you know, "Have you been, you know, out of state? Have you been asked to take a test by Department of Health?" And, but we'll also have the ability to screen, you know, to take people's temperatures if we need to. That's what our nurses will be doing. They'll, they'll mitigate, there's a, there's a process, we have the playbook that the Department of Health has put out. You know, this process is going to be more challenging at the high school, where we don't really have stable pods than at an elementary school. So we, we're comfortable with the process, but you know, the, the challenge is, okay, what's it really look like when the first case happens? And how do people react? If somebody's identified as being positive or potentially in a classroom, you know, there's a responsibility we have in terms of notifying people, in terms of, you know, not to the individual, but there's some notification that has to take place. How does our community handle that? You know, these are all things that we don't know. You know, and, and, you know, people are talking about childcare, things haven't happened. But we see you, you know, in, every state now has had problems when students have gone back to college, a lot of reasons. You know, I'm hoping it doesn't happen, I'm hoping the low incident rate makes us create, you know, a new normal that is acceptable. But exactly right, I have parents ask me all the time, "What's going to happen if a student doesn't wear a mask?" Right? All these different situations. We can come up with policy, but then in protocol, how does it look? You know? You know, in practice, I mean. So this is a process that, you know, we all are going through. And I think, you know, part of it is, again, we decided, you know, when other people decided to say they were going to just do distance learning, we have a lot of reasons that we could have, and we didn't. And I know it's, it's pressing on people, but we're developing a plan and we're working with other people to bring back people into our schools. We're not saying we're not going to make a decision till, you know, after the holidays. We're telling you that, you know, I know it's a short period of time, a month, but we're willing to do the work, and we've been willing to do the work to, to do it, to get it right. So I hope that answers your questions, Dave.
Thanks, Mr. Levis, thank you very much.
Okay, my final comment is that I support this reopening plan. I think a phased-in approach makes a lot of sense. I think it's really the only way to approach all of the different scenarios that could possibly happen if we reopen schools, when we, when we reopen schools. And I think that we'll learn a lot from how that rolls out and how children react to wearing masks, how teachers feel, how safe everybody feels. So I'm 100% okay with bringing back these kids, these populations. My advice to parents who were over something more, that their kid would definitely go back to school full-time. If you happen to have the right kid in, in the population we're talking about, or they're pre-K or kindergarten, then that's going to happen for you. The remainder of parents, I, like Mr. Murray said, you need contingency plans. And in fact, even our populations that we're going to bring back, you need a contingency plan as well. Your student could, you could be called during the middle of your workday that your child is exhibiting some kind of symptom, whether it's a common cold or COVID. And so we're living in a different time, a different world. You cannot expect things to play out the way things have played out in the past. So if I had a young child right now in school, I would be making three contingency plans. We have no idea by the time Thanksgiving rolls around whether or not our COVID infection rate and flu rate in the state will make us have to make a decision that we close schools again. That's a fact, and it can't be ignored. And the best-laid plans, no matter what we do, there is that possibility. And so parents need to be aware of that and know that nothing is guaranteed. We didn't expect schools to close last March 16th, and they did. So that's my only piece of advice to anyone who's thinking like, you know, "You're not giving us enough information, and what am I, how am I supposed to plan? And, 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 you know, what, 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 what?" Answering all these questions. Quite honestly, I don't think anything is guaranteed this coming year. And until we have a good vaccine for a lot of people and some therapeutics that work, then nothing can be guaranteed. And we can do the best possible thing planning, and it could all fall apart. But what I do, I am very grateful that we are going to be able to bring back some populations that I think truly need to have in person and, and to do a phased-in approach. And if everything works out and things work, then we'll bring more and more of us given back. So the phased-in approach makes a lot of sense to me, and I fully support it. And I want to thank everyone for working on this. And all we can say is we, we're going to hope for the best. And that's it from me. I guess we can go to the pub, why don't we make a motion? I think, are we ready to make a motion first? And then we can take it back out to the public. Are we ready to move on this request?
Madam Chair, make a motion to approve the Coventry Schools reopening plan as presented slash amended.
Second the motion. Okay, so let's bring it out to the public. I see 13 hands raised, Mr. Murphy. So if we could let the public have their questions or concerns raised.
Okay, Stephanie, you're up first. If you could state your name and address to the record and unmute your microphone.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yep.
Stephanie Anderson, ToneNet, 183 Pig Hill Road. I'm speaking not only as a parent of three children in the district, but I'm also speaking as a teacher. But first and foremost, as a parent, I don't agree with the decision that's being made tonight that you just voted on, due to the fact is I feel like now my children, who I have a third grader, a kindergartner and a preschooler, are now the guinea pigs. I understand the reasoning due to buildings and things like that, but I'm also a teacher of one of those special programs. So now not only am I being used as the guinea pig to see how it's going to go, but now my, my children are being used as guinea pigs. And I feel that's really sad. If you're going to send, you know, a little bit back, you need to send all of us back. I just, like I said, I don't agree with it, and I'm being, you know, very upfront. I respect everything that everybody is doing. But when it comes to down to my own kids and my students, I just, I'm feeling like we're guinea pigs right now. Who's going to get it first? And like I said, I just, I want to be back in front of my kids, my own students. I've kept in contact with them all summer. I've FaceTimed, you know, everything. But think about a preschooler. First off, they're not required to wear masks. But telling my three-year-old he can't touch a toy because that one's only Jones. Or telling my kindergartner, you know what, Tuesday through Friday, honey, you're wearing a mask all day and you can't leave this classroom? And don't go near your friends, stay six feet apart. I just, their social emotional is not going to be good. Older children can understand it better than our younger populations and even our, some of our special ed populations. That's all I have to say. You tell me I'm back September 9th, I'm going to be there because I don't have a choice. Because I need, I support my house. So just know that I'm not the only one feeling like we're being guinea pigs right now. Thank you.
Can I say something to that? Madam Chair?
Sure.
Because I, I, listen, I know that's a tough question to take on. So I'm, but I'm always wanting to get my head chopped off. I, what I don't want is people, teachers especially, to think that they're guinea pigs by any means. The truth is, we have to bring back, we're, we're trying to bring back students in a phased fashion with the most responsible way possible, right? These are not easy decisions. So to say it's guinea pigs, it's, I would say honestly, if we're throwing everybody back, then we would be a guinea pig because now we're basically subjecting teachers, everyone well before we're probably ready, right? We've already set all the issues on the table and we're not ready for full in-person. We're trying to take it in a roll-out fashion and to the point where if parents don't feel comfortable, we've said over and over, as the governor has said, then you can opt for the distance learning. So if you don't like the plan presented tonight, then by all means, don't go with it. And, you know, that's a parent's right and I'll be making the same decisions as a parent. But I don't want teachers as a whole thinking they're guinea pigs just because we're asking them to be in the classroom in a phased fashion. I know that it seems, they seem like it, but I think it would be more irresponsible if we were to say, okay, let's go ahead and fill up the entire, you know, all of Western Coventry Elementary School just because we want to do in-person learning. And we'll, we'll, we make the bare minimum of state guidelines and that's okay. You know, that would be a guinea pig type situation. I don't think that's fair. But I guess I just take issue with the question, you know, because I'm usually on, I would usually take that side of it, but I, you know, I think in this situation, you know, what do we do? I mean, the options are full distance learning or we try to roll it in a fashion or we go full in-person. So, you know, I think this partial is a way to reduce the exposure. I, we have, you know, obviously a very unique case with a teacher. And I feel bad for that, but with regards to the student, you know, by all means, you have every right to select distance for your child and go a different direction with that. That's all. I didn't want to let that go unanswered. Thank you. Okay, next is Jay Rule. If you could unmute your mic and state your name and address to the record.
Yes, Jessica Rule, 376 Chaplin Drive. First and foremost, I want to thank the committee and particularly Lucas Murray for answering or asking a lot of the questions that I had on my list here, particularly around what does distance learning look like? And really the overall statement of making sure that things are communicated because I feel like a lot of parents on this call, one are hearing this plan for the first time and a lot of questions are not being, you know, answered because it doesn't seem as though it's very clear. So with what we do, information we do have, one of the questions that I have is really around, you know, what is the stipulation? What is the difference between everyone going back when phasing in from September 14th to October 13th? And really, what is the biggest change that's going to happen? That's going to allow students to go back full-time?
I'll, I'll address that. I mean, I think we, we addressed that earlier. In terms of, for me, it's making sure the buildings are safe. And so that, you know, we are looking at every single space and trying to make sure that they're safe. We have everything else that we can do. And you're right, it's going to be different, it's going to be challenging for individuals. You know, and just, you know, we posted our plans. What we're presenting tonight was always, we've always stressed and talked about getting pre-K and K back, whether it's a task force, a consortium I was part of. That's always been a priority. We've identified that. But we want to make sure the buildings are safe. And as, as Mr. Coward had said, you know, people are saying, well, you know, how are you going to get that done in a month? We just started looking at the air quality component today. In our next agenda item, we're going to talk about budget because budget also has an impact in, in what we're talking about. So we're hoping that very quickly we can identify spaces with everything else that we've put together in our plans, provide a safe environment. I'm not going to bring back anybody, including the small programs, if we can't ensure that the environment's safe. You know, and then having done that, you know, we're never going to prevent, you know, we never can stop everything from happening. But we, we feel that we've taken enough steps to make sure that, I don't want anybody to be a guinea pig. And so we're talking about transition. We're not talking about guinea pigs. We're talking about seeing how certain routines, transportation, parent pickup in a small scale, how does that all work and drop-off? That's what we're talking about. Not saying, okay, do we have an infection take place with a few people? And then we add a few more people. Do we have an infection that takes place? That's not what we're talking about at all. So we do believe that we can transition fairly quickly and get more individuals in. You know, I'm sorry we're at where we're at, but this is, this has been our reality. We've discussed this every single school committee meeting. And like I said,
And I've been on, and I've been on pretty much all of the school committee meetings since this has gone on. And so, you know, do you have the numbers as far as right now? How many people that fall under those categories of pre-K, K, special programs of, you know, what, what are the numbers right now?
So we talked about, yeah, probably about, you know, like when you look at the 25%, it's, it's between another, depending on who, who comes in, it's probably another 10 or 15%. So we're looking at like 35 to 40% of our population will be addressing, you know, between those coming into school and those that have opted out for complete distance learning.
Okay, and that doesn't take into account the people that do fall under those special programs that may also opt for distance learning fully as well?
Those are figured in, but we, we still want to call to verify to make sure. When we talk, you know, because these numbers are small enough, we want to make sure that. And again, to the point that, that other people have asked, Mr. Murray, we do plan on communicating, you know, exactly what will transpire in terms of transportation. Our, our schools are doing, you know, we're doing videos around routines. And so students will know exactly, you know, from a video perspective, what to expect, what's going to be different. We're doing those at a building-based level. We've offered them a videographer to support those efforts. So, you know, tonight is our first step in terms of the communication with the community, you know, and with the school committee.
Okay. And just one last, because I know you have others that, that have raised their hand, is, you know, in terms of obviously, one of the biggest stipulations is trying to control and the contact tracing and making sure that you're, you're controlling the population and the groups that you're being allowed back. But how does that play into being factored when you're also talking about then having after-school programs or support groups that are going to be through the Y? So how, how are you able to then allow for that?
So let me, let me, the Y component was, you know, there are guidelines for daycare that the Y has to abide by in terms of, they're very strict, stricter than, than I believe, you know, they're going to have to look at, they could only work with groups of students and they may have to go by grade level. So what I was saying is, I think the point is that we've been working and talking to the Y, discussing them, supporting families either before, after school or during the day when students aren't in, they'll have the staff, but it's going to be limited. They'll be limited in terms of how they can support students. Like they can't have students from grades one through five in a, in a group. They're going to have to support, you know, as stable a pod as possible based on, you know, Washington Oak or Western Coventry. We're trying to work with the Kent County Y on those other, other areas, schools. So I, I was just making reference to the Y camp because school was pushed off from August, September 1st to the 14th. They're staying open for those students. That's all I, that's all my reference was to the camp.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay, next up is Anne Marie. Anne Marie, if you could state your name and address to the record and unmute your microphone.
Hello?
Hello, we can hear you.
Hi, I'm sorry. My name's Anne Marie Moore. I live at 25 Kettleway. Again, I'm going to ask a couple of questions. The first one being is SAT programs. We're supposed to have a SAT testing for the senior year students. Last year, the juniors didn't have SATs. The recent August testing was canceled. What's going to happen to my senior?
So I believe that SAT is actually scheduled for the, for the spring, I believe.
Oh, no, it wasn't spring.
No, no, this spring, this upcoming spring, I believe.
Okay, we're going into the fall.
Correct.
Okay.
But I think in terms of the district, we offer SATs.
He's going to fill out applications and need his SAT scores. We're not talking about the spring, we're talking about this fall.
Yeah, I can't, I will find out, but I, I don't think that SAT is going to be offered this fall.
Are you serious?
I could be, I could be wrong. I don't want to.
The international test date is October 14th and I'm sorry, but you should know that.
I know that we've scheduled for the state that we offer in school.
It's October 14th.
I believe that's not what we, we do the SAT and we do the SAT for.
For juniors.
Correct, correct.
In the spring. My son's not a junior, he's a senior and he's going to college unless you guys mess up his future, which is what it sounds like is going to happen.
I misunderstood your question. I thought you were talking about when we're offering the SAT.
The SAT is nationwide and it's October. And you're supposed to offer that. And actually, I mean, we have children that are applying for early admittance colleges. We just had amazing AP scores. My child wasn't even one of them. But however, I am concerned about the future of the children, of the rising seniors. And I appreciate the fact that you're trying to take care of the elementary and the special needs kids and everything else. But what about the future of the children that are, have worked so hard this entire time and are now trying to graduate and can't even get into colleges because they don't have the SAT scores and whatever else they need? There's not going to be any guidance for the seniors because the schools are going to be closed to them? Because the middle school, as you just explained, is going to be utilizing the facility, if I'm correct.
That's how we're starting right now till we can get the okay to go open our, our middle school and our high school so that we can.
But you're explaining to me that this will not be available until probably way after October, probably more like December or after the holiday. And that's too late for a lot of our brilliant, most brilliant children.
Yeah, I, I'm not saying.
And mind you, my child is not one of them.
Yeah, I'm not saying that. In terms of, I, you know, I can get you an answer in terms of how we're addressing the SAT. I'm not going to answer that tonight. I can't answer that tonight.
You should be able to do that.
Well, I'm telling you that, that I'm not comfortable giving you an answer about that myself.
Okay. And you've also mentioned that the middle school is going to be utilizing the school and only CTE students.
Correct.
That have specific requirements are going to be allowed for their certifications. I have a child that is in the career tech program. He is not one of those students who needs to be in there 24/7, but there are certain programs that he is going to need to be used because according to his computer teacher, he explained that because of licensing and so forth, there are certain things that can only be taught with the licensing at the school. So if my son is already enrolled in two classes for this upcoming fall, am I supposed to, like, how am I supposed to know if I'm supposed to pull him out? Because the licensing and the certification for the courses that he's enrolled in for this fall are not going to be available because he can't get into the building.
So we're, we're prioritizing students that have requirements in terms of the CTE. So, and we'll send that information out, but we are, that's the reason why we're, we're starting with those students. And again, our goal is, I, I've never said we're going to wait till December. You know, I, I'm telling you that right now, what we're doing so we can open the schools. And we're bringing those students over from the middle school till we can get the okay to open the middle school. Right now, we're trying to get the okay so that we can bring students back in our elementary schools. And I know there's a debate of why aren't the high school students in the pre-K? And I'm not going to enter that debate right now. But I can tell you, as soon as we get the ability to bring students back in at the numbers we need to, then we will bring them back into the schools.
Okay, so what I'm asking is tomorrow, I can call the school and find out if my son's specific two classes that he's enrolled in for this fall are specifically to be licensed and he can be switched out of those classes into either college level or other CTE classes because he's not going to be able to get legitimate certification like I was told he didn't get last time, even though he got certified.
Yeah, I, I can't. I mean, I, I would definitely suggest you contact the high school. I, I'm not sure what you're referring.
So you guys are open and can are receptive to phone calls and everything else? Or should I email?
Yeah, you can call, you can email. Email's always the best way to get somebody, I think, right now. But you can contact the high school and if you can't, you can reach out to me.
All right. So basically, you don't know yet if you're going to be participating in the nationwide SATs. So I should reschedule my son to take another test just in case you guys aren't able to do it?
Yeah, Don's going to answer that.
Hi, Mrs. Moore, it's Don Coward.
Hi, Don, I love you, by the way.
How are you? I, I think I have your answers. I've been texting with Mrs. Bowden as, as you were talking because I knew they were offered in the fall because I also have a rising senior hoping to go to college. And they are going to be offered in October, November, December. You're going to register through the college board site. They're supposed to be free for seniors. And Mrs. Bowden also said that many of the colleges are waiving the SAT due to the fact that they weren't able to take them last year.
Yeah, well, one of my friends is having her son apply to different colleges more on the MIT level and it's more complicated than that. But like I said, so you guys will be honoring the October 14th SAT in the school, even if the school is not open to the high schoolers at that point.
Yeah, and let me ask, I want to follow up. So the answer is yes. The other thing I was going to add to that, just because I want to clear this up for you and anybody who's listening, is the middle school programs going to the high school are looking to go into about four classrooms and maybe five at the most. They're not taking the entire building. They're looking at four or five classrooms. And then the rest of the building, we're going to be going through and making sure those inside spaces, spaces are acceptable for kids to come in because they're interior rooms without windows and looking at the other spaces so that kids who need to take the SATs on location, if they're offered at the high school, will be able to go in and do so.
Thank you for clarifying, Don. That is why I love you.
No problem.
Madam Chair? Madam Chair, it's Dave Florio.
Here's Mr. Florio.
Could Mrs. Coolian, Mrs. Coolian always make some motion to extend the meeting after 10 o'clock? Donna, would you like to make that motion?
I would. Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to extend the meeting past 10, 10 PM.
Second.
Could we have a row call vote, please?
How are you about that? Kathy Katnold?
Yes.
Dave Florio?
Yes.
Luke Murray? Donna Colonian?
Yes.
James Pearson?
Yes.
Thank you for the motion. Mr. Murphy, who's next?
Nicole, you are next. If you could state your name and address for the record and unmute your microphone.
Hi, good evening, Cole Woodcock, 67 Hopkins Silver Road. And I have a question as far as opening up the elementary schools. Now, obviously, this has been going on since March with the pandemic, and I understand with the governor's orders, everything has been changing. Why wasn't hybrid automatically put into play for the start of the school year? Is there a reason why? I mean, I know Connecticut school system has started the three different, if you decided you wanted to keep your kids home due to the pandemic or send your kid to school, why didn't we automatically go with a three different plan for our schools to get our kids in? I have a fifth grader or going into fifth grade this year. I'm really hoping that she gets into school even two days a week. Preferably all week, but even two days would be better to get her acclimated and ready for moving into the junior high in sixth grade.
So we presented our original plan that we thought was the most realistic was a hybrid across the board. And I understand there's a, there was a strong push from, you know, the commissioner and the governor to get elementary in every day. And we struggled with that, right? We struggled with that for a lot of reasons. We talked a little bit about CDC guidelines. And then, and this is not excuse, this is just the reality, is that four weeks ago, then the whole issue around air quality came to the surface and, and, you know, so that's, that is something that's been taken a priority in our end. But in the meantime, looking at the numbers, looking at space, we're trying to come back with a full return. There's a lot of work still has to be done, you know, in terms of communication to parents and working with our teachers and our principals, but we're trying to look at the full return model. It would be Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday for elementary school, as Mr. Coward had suggested before. We still believe the hybrid is the closest we can come to a full return at middle school and high school. So Massachusetts has gone, you know, given options, and I know the community I live in is, is moving forward with a hybrid model, but across the board. But that is not something that we were encouraged to do. We had a recent meeting and we worked with RIDE and, you know, I think that they were supportive in what we were put forward, and I believe we shared what we were going to put forward tonight with them. But, so that's, that's the answer to it, is that, you know, hybrid across the board was not encouraged or really supported. So we've tried to work with all the resources we have and what we know to move forward to, closer to a full return for at least pre-K to five.
And I'm sorry, a follow-up, because you keep mentioning the air quality within our school system, but it sounds like we've had an ongoing problem based on all the teachers that are calling in about mold and air quality. So this has obviously been an ongoing, and I am a graduate of Coventry and have lived here my entire life, so has my husband. We have still been working, fortunately, full-time and making different plans to care for our child throughout all of this. So I don't understand why now, and obviously, I understand it is a pandemic that we're going through, and this isn't the norm, but it sounds like our air quality in our schools, in the care of our schools, has been going down. I hate that it sounds like it's taking a pandemic to make that get better.
No, it's not, I mean, the, the condition of our schools, I've been here, you know, it'll be five years, November 30th, and the condition of our schools has been a major issue from day, day one that I've been here. The fact that, you know, money hasn't been allocated for, for capital for so long, and that, you know, just, you know, employees that take care of our buildings have been cut, just adds to this. This, this air quality issue, though, is specifically related to the virus and how it's, you know, airborne transmission. So again, you know, we have a lot of issues in our, our school buildings, our facilities, our maintenance, our facilities, people do an incredible job, but, you know, with what we have. But I, I want to say that there's, there's, you know, I don't know if you've been around or listened to the Jacobs report that was put forward several years ago that identified $60 million necessary repairs. And that's not anything that we do like cosmetics, that was just getting a lot of the mechanicals, the wiring up to par. So we've known that for a long time in terms of the facilities, but this is specific to the virus, and that's why.
So that goes to our town, because I am a taxpayer and have lived in Coventry my entire life, and so has all of my family, and I know how much we pay in taxes into the town of Coventry. So obviously, our town is not putting enough into our school system for the amount of money that we're paying out of our taxes.
You know, and I made a statement before, and I'm not going to get into it, but I think just paying taxes is one thing, but, you know, Mr. Murray talked about getting engaged because we've, you know, we, there's been crisis mode every single year on different things, and it's, it just gets worse. And, you know, I don't want to get into the, the percentage of people that vote or engage, but, you know, in terms of the virus and what we're doing, we're taking the steps that we feel are necessary to ensure the safety of our students and staff. And I'll stand by that, whether people agree with that or not. We've been consistently conveying that message, and that's what we're doing now.
And, and I appreciate that, and I understand by the governor, and I understand how everything is changing. And it's changing daily. I watch her debriefs for my own job, I have to, and I understand they're changing so frequently. However, the school system, I mean, the kids have been out of school since March. So did we not have three different plans in place, best case, worst case, middle ground already in the works since March? Or, I mean, it seems like it's something new, and we're two weeks out now from when kids should be starting school.
We've been planning all along since the planning phase started, and, you know, we've had our plans published, they've changed, we've met recently with, like I said, with RIDE, that's changed, and other factors have changed. So that's what we're dealing with right now.
So we should have a definite answer next week, this week, two days before, when kids are supposed to go back to school?
I, in terms of long-term planning, I'm saying that we'll have a definite plan in terms of our initial phase, you know, and then as information comes forward, we'll, we'll add to that. But I can't tell you today exactly when that will happen. I think Mr. Murray had asked a question before, and I said that we will have information about our, our, our initial phase, I'm hoping, well before next school committee meeting, on those programs that we plan on bringing back right now.
So should I purchase my child's list of school stuff that she needs to bring in her first day of school now, or wait two weeks for when we get a definite answer?
I can't tell you when to purchase, but our plan is to get, you know, if your child's an elementary student, our plan is to get them in as soon as we can for those four days a week.
So September 14th?
I didn't say that.
Thank you.
Okay, up next is Jessica. Jessica, if you could state your name and address for the record and unmute your microphone. Jessica, sorry, your microphone on mute, and then it muted back up.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, sorry. So I am Jessica Card, I am in Station Street in Coventry, obviously. My question is a little twofold. I know you'll be discussing the budget and the next agenda item. However, I am concerned about the students in the population that is going back to school, being pre-K, kindergarten, and special ed. I know that our budget right now is on a freeze, understandably so. However, will you be able to purchase the items necessary for each and every student to have their own individual materials when it comes to classroom supplies? And also for teachers to have enough PPE to feel safe and comfortable within the classroom environment?
Yes, I actually, most definitely, we'll make sure that we have the supplies needed and the materials. We talked about that today, we did a walkthrough, and we're at the high school talking about specifically, you know, manipulatives and different materials in terms of sharing what we, what we can share, what we can't share. So we definitely will support that.
Okay, thank you, yes. I know, I am a preschool teacher within the district. I am ready and willing to go back to school, I need to meet my students, I need to have a relationship with them, I am more than willing to be there. I just want to make sure that the, the supplies are there and the materials are there, and of course, the protective equipment for teachers is there as well, that's all.
Yes, thank, you know, I appreciate that question, but, but definitely, we're not, you know, again, I, I can't tell people how to feel, but we're not looking at this as, as, you know, you or your students being guinea pigs by any means.
No, no, I appreciate that. I mean, when it comes to preschool, I feel like we need to be there in person, otherwise I'm just a face on the screen. So I appreciate your honesty, and I look forward to meeting my students, my students with the materials and the protective equipment necessary, thank you.
Thanks, Jessica.
Okay, up next is Lori. Lori, if you could state your name and address for the record and unmute your microphone.
Hey, guys, good evening. My name's Lori, I live on Hope Furnace Road. My question is on transportation. I, I know everybody has been talking about what the school's plan looks like, but I would really like to hop on some transportation. I have some notes over here about elementary going on September 14th, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, and then incorporating first grade, second grade, third grade, four and five, and moving up to middle school and high school. But what my question is, super simple, relies strictly on J V Doyle and Hendrickson buses. Could you tell me if we are transporting those two this year?
So the, the answer is yes, I believe legally, we have to transport, and we've talked about that. So we will be transporting those, those students.
Okay, do those routes get built by paperwork that's submitted to Ocean State? Do?
So, so those are depot, those are depot spots, they're like door-to-door spots, but that information will be communicated by Ocean State through Father John V Doyle. But we'll make sure that information is communicated.
Why I'm asking is because J V Doyle starts next week.
Yeah.
And do those parents of those students know what bus their kids are taking?
Probably not yet, but even our own students, you know, a lot of times, the, the exact routes are, you know, obviously, this is a different, different year, but I will make sure, I'll work with our transportation director tomorrow to see where we stand with that, to make sure that information is communicated out with the, with the locations are.
Okay, because I have an added district child as well, and I love how you guys are talking about backup plans. Like, I had to go to Ripta for a backup plan as far as transportation to school, to their school, because I did not know what our plan was. And we all don't know what our plan is, but like any other parent, you have to kind of incorporate strategy and look completely outside of the element that you're in. And I had to go as far as Ripta because I couldn't rely on our town having an answer because we didn't know what the answer was, had a backup plan, they didn't have the answer, communicated with their school, they didn't have.
We don't answer that question.
That's okay, I'm just wondering, like, but just hopping on the backup plan. It is important to be strategic and have an idea, but I really, my question was strictly on J V Doyle and Hendrickson, are we transporting those students? And you said yes, so I appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is Jen. If you could state your name and address for the record and unmute your microphone.
Yes, my name is Jennifer Marsleck, 7 Tamarack Trail. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. I had my hand raised before in, when we were discussing the building air filtration, but it was just getting way too extended at that point. I know everyone's frustrated that this has gone on for way too long, we're finding all this out way too late. I, myself, am extremely frustrated tonight. I have an eighth grader and a senior. And while I completely understand the need to bring preschool, kindergarten, special education, CTE, and all of those components back in, and yes, they do need it, I honestly think as a district, we could do a lot better. I mean, there are so many kids out there that are deserving of an in-person education right now that are going to fall through the cracks. We're going to lose so many ratings as a school district, everything that you guys are proud of, and I think, Luke, I discussed this with you the other night, when, last week, when you held your District Five Zoom meeting. I, I just don't understand, I, we are catering to the beginning of school development right now and forgetting about how the end is just as important. These juniors and seniors that are depending on these two years to get into good colleges, to improve their grades, to get that athletic scholarship that they've been so counting on, we're not even giving them a chance. I mean, you're talking about hybrid come, it was October 13th that the governor threw out today, not the 14th. Where, you know, we might be able to phase those secondary kids in by a hybrid by that time, but if grades pre-K through five don't phase in appropriately, and God forbid, we get some COVID, which we will in all of these buildings, we are going to have COVID. This virus is not going to be eradicated anytime soon, with or without a vaccine, people aren't going to accept the vaccine, the vaccine's going to take years to get through the entire population. And I understand the air quality is poor, but the air quality and the mold is nothing new. And most, if not all, viruses are airborne, but common cold, the flu, it's all airborne. It's been airborne for years. I forget which one of my kids, when they were at Washington, oh, one year, we had a horrible neurovirus bout going around, and it took out like a third of the school. My younger one's raising his hand as I'm saying that. So I, I, I just, I don't understand why we are not considering all the different populations and giving them a chance. I know you said RIDE, hybrid was not the best way to go, I understand that, and I can understand the, the problems with a hybrid model. However, Connecticut as a, almost, I believe, as a whole, is doing a hybrid model. Some of them are doing the every other day, some of them are doing the four half-day model. At least two-thirds of our school systems in Rhode Island are going to end up going back. East Providence just posted their plan. I was just reading it as I was waiting for everybody to speak. North Kingstown, Charahoe, all these districts are going back, and I understand their buildings may be better and their, you know, their funding may be better, and they may have excess fund in rainy days and this and that funds, but we have to do better. Our ratings are going to fall, not to mention, how, how many of these eighth graders coming out next year, their parents are going to say, I may have been teetering on Hendrickson, Prow, Pontigan City, NK for a CD, that, that's not even going to be a question in their mind anymore, we didn't even try for our kids. As a parent, I'm so disappointed. I grew up in Coventry, my husband grew up in Coventry. I remember problems in the middle school when I was in Coventry, these are not new. The, the mold on chairs and flags and different things that have been posted, that, that's despicable and disgraceful, I, that 100% has to be taken care of, but, I mean, I, like, I mean, I, like I said, I have a child in the middle, in the middle school. And I know some parents shared on other Zoom calls and other evenings that they believed that, you know, as impressionable and as important as those early learning years are, and yes, they can't get on computers, and yes, they can't get on Zoom and be paying attention and all that. I think we really need to think of the whole spectrum and the last end of our spectrum, too. We're basically tossing our high schoolers and middle schoolers, we're tossing them out. I mean, you have to give them a chance. Distance learning isn't going to do one-fifth of what they need. They at least need to get in the schools, learn the teachers, get acquainted with their teachers, get their routines. And then you know what? If we have to go out because there's a few cases of COVID, then so be it. We need to reach out to our community. I'm a nurse. I would be more than willing to help on my days off to do whatever you need, triage, take temperatures. I mean, you were mentioning CNAs before. I'm sure we could get quite a few nurses in our communities to help. This, we have to do better. I know you've all been working. I credit you for the work that you've been doing, the long hours, the countless meetings. But we have to do better. We have to consider all of our children. This is only considering a tiny portion of our children. All of our children are important. They all deserve in-person education ASAP. Thank you.
Thank you, Jen.
Madam Chair, can I say something quickly?
Yes, go ahead.
Because Jen did speak in the session that I helped the District One. And she spoke well in that session and it brought the, to the forefront, many parents. And I'll just advocate on their behalf, because I did hear it. I originally had spoken about a K through five sort of model incremental partial return and sort of my views on that. And several parents did express viewpoints like we're hearing tonight, that in the junior seniors at the other end of the spectrum, you know, what are they sacrificing? Especially going into potential college careers, vocational careers. And it's something that I certainly didn't consider as much. But I'd be remiss if I didn't bring it up on their behalf of that. Maybe it's something that we do need to look at. If our next increment, you know, makes sense that we look at the other end of the spectrum. I know you're looking at all of it, but it's something, and I, you know, it's my job to bring feedback to the administration from my district and whoever I hear from. And that constantly came up, looking at those seniors who worked so hard over and over again to get to this point, unfortunately, won't have that opportunity to have their senior year or their junior year where they're taking SATs and trying to bridge to the next step. So it's something that certainly think about as we move forward.
Yeah, I just want to say, Mr. Murray, we definitely, you know, again, when we put our first plan together, we planned on bringing back middle and high school students. It may not be every student every day, but, you know, I can't dismiss the fact that, you know, comments made about, well, maybe this funding and maybe the buildings, but I'm not going to dismiss how much that impacts us 24/7 here in Coventry, you know, and I listened to the North Kingston School Committee meeting and the conversations that took place and, you know, many districts that are a different place. And I'm not making excuses. We're hitting things head-on and we're moving forward here. We definitely want to bring students back as soon as we can. There's no excuse here. Obviously, people, many people aren't going to agree with what we're doing around air quality. I've said it numerous times that this is specific to COVID-19. And we're dealing with it now. We have somebody come in, we're looking, we're trying to find ways. We are finding ways to make sure we can bring people in as soon as possible. I don't have this picture in my head that we're going to drag this out to December. So I know I don't have the information that people want tonight, but we're being honest as we always have been. And I'd much rather take the hit, but I'd much rather come back in a week or whatever, however time and say, this is what we've identified and this is what we can do. But I don't want to, we're not looking at, you know, the juniors and seniors, that doesn't matter. You know, I saw the heartache last year firsthand with our juniors and seniors. And I dealt with all the comments too about concerns over graduation. But then I saw, you know, while it wasn't a typical year, I saw the gratitude that students and families had because of the effort we put forward. And I can promise we're doing the same thing now. And when we get our students back in, we'll make sure that people understand, that they understand just how important they are and to what length we will go to make sure they're successful. And I'm speaking, you know, I don't need to speak those words because that's coming from our staff, our administrators. They believe the same. They want their students back. I think you heard Ms. Aronakis say it before. We're just taking the steps we feel and, you know, that are necessary now to make sure that we come back and, you know. And I'm not looking for, you know, an excuse to not bring other kids back. I want to be clear about that. This phase is not looking for an excuse, so we stop the progress, the process.
Okay, up next we have Hillary. Hillary, if you could state your name and address for the record and unmute your microphone. Hillary? Hillary, it looks like your microphone is unmuted.
Can you hear me? Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. Hi, sorry, I had headphones in. It's Hillary Connors, Two Woodmills Circle. I'm, I have a clarifying question and then possibly a follow-up question. So my first question is, well, first I just want to say thank you to the school committee and thank you to Mr. Lovis for taking the air quality seriously. My clarifying question is, is this proposed plan based on funding? Or is this some, and maybe I'm ahead of the questions on the agenda, rather, and I apologize for that. But is this proposed plan based on funding or is this something we are ready with funding to do starting on the 14th?
No, we're ready to do this right now, starting on the 14th. We'll talk about funding at our next agenda item, but this is something that we plan on implementing on the 14th. And again, as new information comes on board, we plan on phasing in the rest of our students.
Okay, thank you. And then my next question is, the phasing in, what would, what would be a threshold or a criteria that would cause that phasing in to slow down or stop, or a school to close, or the whole district to close back down again? Is it a certain number of cases? Is it a death? Is it, you know, a certain number of cases across the district or within one school? Does it vary by school? Because my concern is that if we don't have some sort of hard line or number and then something does come up, as the governor stated today, it will happen. And for some reason, it's not contained due to unforeseen reasons, not, not the school system. What would cause that slowdown to happen?
So there's, on our website, on the re-entry plan, there's the playbook that the Department of Health and Department of Ed had put together. And it gives you a step-by-step chart in terms of how it'll be mitigated. I mean, really, the state has taken a lot of this on, to their credit. You know, again, there's, there are components and parts that the state, when I say state, Department of Ed and Department of Health and the governor's office have done an incredible job. And I think if you look at the playbook, it breaks that all down. Our nurses are really, they're reporting, they're the first line in terms of addressing this and identifying. But then we turn it all over to the Department of Health and they're going to do a lot of the tracing for us. And, you know, having a case doesn't necessarily mean a school will close down. If it's a stable pod and we can track, it'll impact those individuals. I mean, that's why we're going to have seating charts everywhere that we go. We'll have schedules and know what adults are with home, when they're with those individuals. You know, people that spend more than 15 minutes and within a six-foot circle will have that information. There's a lot of information that we have to have, but the Department of Health and Department of Ed and, you know, they've put together this incredible playbook that we will be following. So it's not that simple. It depends on the scenario and the situation. I think things are much more complex at the high school, even though we'll have seating charts, but we're not going to have stable groups at the high school. Very, you know, you know, the middle school will have more stable groups and then we'll really be able to have stable pods at the elementary level. So there's many variables that come into play. So there isn't just a one answer. It depends on the scenario and how we do that tracking. But the Department of Health has done a great job in laying that out. It's very complex and comprehensive. And, you know, we have identified key people for every building, our nurses, that are point people for the Department of Health and they'll be in communication constantly.
Okay, but as far as the phasing in part, so that I understand that the closures and the contact tracing may be on the state, but with the plan to phase, like you said first, or Don said first, first and second, maybe third, how do we know when to slow that down or not to?
Well, I'm hoping that obviously we'll be in contact, you know, in terms of the state or district. You know, that would be a lot of, that would, I believe a lot of that would come from the Department of Health. You know, if the state shuts down, obviously the governor, you know, based on the information, we're obviously hoping that doesn't happen. But in terms of our phase, our phase is really based on right now in terms of getting space freed up. And also, you know, as Don had mentioned, Mr. Coward had mentioned, you know, quickly trying to give an adjustment period for a few grades and then adding more. But it doesn't mean we can't do something simultaneous with the high school and middle school at the same time, too. We're talking more about the elementary school. So I'm not looking at this, you know, unless something happens drastically at the state level, I'm not looking, you know, or we have major issues at our, at our schools, and I'm not expecting that, honestly. Not, not the initial phase. But we'll have to deal with that. If that happened, we'd have to, you know, obviously it would be a decision we'd make publicly, discuss that.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks, Hillary.
All right, up next is Karen. Karen, if you could just state your name and address for the record and unmute your microphone.
Hi, Karen Delone, Regalwood Drive in Coventry. Hi, thank you. So my question comes, just like Jen had mentioned, we were actually on the same meeting that Mr. Murray had hosted. And my question comes to your thought processes of why the high school was thought of last. If you're going to phase in two or three grades of the elementary school, why could you not turn around and phase in four grades of the high school? Especially with parents and elementary school-aged grade teachers expressing their concern of how those kids are going to handle it. Then you, you add in the factor of the type of classes that the high school has. Science labs, the career tech classes, foreign language classes, classes that, to my knowledge, would give college credit on top of the scholarships, the AP classes, the honor classes. You know, the, every grade is important, every, every year is a learning year. But your elementary level years, they, there's room to catch up, if you will, if there's any backslide. These high school years, they're running out of time. There is no time for makeup. There is no extra years. These colleges that are going to require, depending on your degrees, four years of languages and four years of certain classes, how are you going to get into that degree if, because of not having an in-person class available, you've only had three years of it? So I'm just wondering if that thought process was there and why, why the decision was flipped?
I can add two things, Mr. Lovis. I know you were going to say something.
No, you can, you can answer.
And I acknowledge every single thing you said. I have two kids in high school, so I feel all those exact same things. The two things about the high school, and then Mr. Lovis can add more if he wanted to, that are tricky, is this whole concept of stable groups. At the elementary level, kids get into stable groups by class. That's how they've been identified or by pods. And they're with that group of kids all day long. So that, for contact tracing reasons, that's a stable group. And it's by class, it's by grade, and it's pretty easy to keep them together, especially if we do things like eating lunch in the classroom and keeping things really kind of tight. At the middle school, we could probably make it work with the teaming model. What we've been trying to do there is come up with ways to rotate teachers through rooms and not kids, so we can keep them in stable groups as well. At the high school, it's a little bit more challenging because the schedules are not the same. Not every class is just by grade level. Sometimes we have a particular class could have more than one grade level in it. Or the classes change every single period. So you're reorganizing all the kids in the schools because they're all on different schedules every single class period. And so the cleaning requirements, all the mitigation requirements that go along with that are different for secondary than they are elementary because they're not in a stable pod all day long. They change pods pretty much every day. And so there's some tricky things that go with that. And I'll just give you an example, cleaning. You know, one of the things they're talking about is that when a room is emptied out, that that room is cleaned before the next group comes in. And, you know, if you've ever been in a high school, I remember when I was in high school, like that, the schedule's pretty tight, right? People leave one classroom, they go into the next one. So we have to figure out how we clean it and the amount of time we have, who's cleaning it, how it gets cleaned in terms of what level of cleanliness is acceptable. Those things are all very challenging questions. Second thing I was going to say, and then I'll stop, is the high school, at least our high school, has a lot of interior spaces, classrooms that don't have access to fresh air through windows. Those rooms all run in some sort of ventilation system. And the high school has many additions with many different dates, you know, they have the 2001 addition, then there was an addition in the 90s. And, and so they all have some, some different pieces that connect them together. And so we just wanted to make sure that the interior classrooms also had what would be acceptable air quality for the kids in those classrooms. And I'm sure Mr. Lovis, if he wants to add more, he can. Those are just two examples that came right off the top. But, you know, as a parent of high school kids, I mean, I can, I feel the exact same way because, and I have a senior. And so there's, there's high stakes involved with this decision for sure.
Yeah, so, you know, I have an incoming freshman who not only lost out on the rite of passage through, you know, eighth grade and all the year-end activities, but just lost out on freshman night, stepping into the, you know, his first year and first day of high school as a freshman, you know, seniors last year, heartbreaking. This is equally as heartbreaking. You know, the transition year for the middle school into middle school, the fifth grade to sixth grade, that's heartbreaking. They lost their year-end at elementary school in going into middle school. It's just, it's, I don't know, I'm just trying to wrap my head around the thought process and, and what these kids are really missing out to what the elementary school kids will then pick up and gain later. It's something these high school kids are never going to get back.
Yeah, Karen, I just want to be brief. I know Mr. Coward, I think he gave, you know, good, honest answers, but I've never said that we're going to wait till like December or whatever to transition the high school back. I, you know, I can't be clear enough that, you know, our original plan was to bring them, the middle school and the high school students back in a hybrid model. And as soon as we can, you know, Mr. Coward mentioned those interior classrooms. You know, as soon as we can get our space identified as being appropriate, then we can transition those, those students back. You know, we've, we've talked about, and just, you know, we've talked about transitioning of, you know, ninth graders. And we've talked about the, the sixth graders coming in. You know, we've looked at that, we've discussed that for a long time. Right now, we're just looking, this is about, we have our plans in place in terms of how we would bring students back. We just need the ability to do that. And whether people agree with it or not, that's what we're doing right now.
Yeah, I think a lot of the concern, a lot of the concern too is also because, you know, you're supposed to listen to the numbers and, you know, and the data and the science back. And what they are saying is, you know, come October, November, flu season, things are going to tick up. So, you know, like the universities are saying, if you can get in September, October, you're probably distance learning through the winter. So by the time you're expecting to possibly get the high school in, school in person, is the time we're probably going to be stuck distance learning and maybe hopes to get in back in the spring when things maybe, you know, get the light at the end of the tunnel. And maybe hopes to get in back in the spring when things maybe, you know, get the light, at light at the end of the tunnel. That's all. That, that's just, that's my point. That's just my thought.
Appreciate it, Karen. Thank you very much.
Okay, Shay, you're next. Just unmute your microphone.
Hi, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
So I think overall, I mean, there's been so many things, I think everybody's sitting on here, that I need clarification and I'm sure many people do. So we are looking at moving forward to not having a definite date. September fourteenth, we're having elementary school children returning, some elementary school kindergarten pre-k. And September fourteenth falls on a Monday, so middle school up to high school will be on distance learning their first day. Is that correct? Is that what I'm understanding?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you so much. That was my clarification. So as of September fourteenth, six through twelve, we'll be going to start school distance learning on Monday. When will you guys have a plan and set? Okay, my daughter, I heard, uh, would be going to school like if it's, uh, L through Z, they'd go to school on Thursday, Friday. When are we going to know this? Uh, you know, Mr. Murray, you mentioned about you have a family, you put three things into play. I'm in the medical field and I can't give my job an answer. I can't even go for a job interview without having specific days, you know, and, um, this is where I, I feel like what I'm seeing is a lot of frustration. I, I can't even implement extra plans because I don't know the clarification of other than the first day of school. And it's, and where I, I'm a little disappointed is things had gotten pushed back by the governor. You guys had to follow. Things are still been in play. All this is not new and it's frustrating. We're two weeks out. You're expecting these kids and these parents all to be on board with some kind of system. And we're two weeks away from them starting this and not every parent is able to do that because we don't have clarification of what's going on. And now it's being pushed back a little bit further. So I feel like you guys have kind of dropped the ball a little bit on clarifying specific answers that these parents, including myself, were looking for today. I mean, you know, I understand everything is played off by some other specific thing, okay? The air quality control people probably couldn't come out because air quality control people were needed across the country and every other building. You know, and so as a parent, I'm trying to be sympathetic to the situation. And I think a lot of people need to take that into consideration, that you guys can only do so much. But we need answers a, at least a week before. Like I, I, I think we as taxpayers and as parents should have an answer no later than next week. I, I mean, to give us time, I can't put a, a one-year-old and a child going into sixth grade, throw them all together, have the funds, the means to know my kids are being taken care of, along with other parents, all in less than a week's time. And try to figure out my work schedule. And so I, I feel that a lot of these parents frustrations are very warrant at this time. I mean, I understand the air quality control, all these specific things are very needed matters to be addressed. You know, but it, it's frustrating. And I, I feel that just, oh, it's being pushed back. It's being pushed back. Well, what happens on Monday if you guys don't get the answers that we need to get these kids into school? You're going to just say on Monday, oh, hi, um, distance learning for everybody? And then you have the parents who do have seniors, who do have kids that are in a crucial time in their education that aren't going to get the, like, it, it's just not enough time. I, I feel you guys have, you know, it's at the end of the stretch that you guys need to make a final decision. It needs to be done and, and sooner than later. I, I mean, I, I don't feel like you guys are even addressing that when parents are saying that they're upset about it like that. It's, it's two weeks out. We've, we've waited. The, the date's been pushed back for several reasons by several authority figures. And we need to come as a whole, we need parents to also understand from their ends that, you know, we have to be sympathetic to what you guys are doing, but it, it's, it's not fair to the everyday person who don't have those means. I know, Mr. Levis, you suggested, I am a member at Camp Westwood and they have done a fantastic job with their summer camp and following those rules. And, but we need a website up. We need to get parents aware because like you guys said, not everybody knows of these resources and people are struggling to get things together for their kids to start school. The norm is you buy your kid a backpack, send them with some school supplies, send the teacher with some school supplies and they go off. Well, this isn't the normal and we should, as a whole community, need to get this together sooner than later. It's, it's imperative for our children. It's imperative for the working average parent who is, you know, I, I was a single parent. What if I was my only household income at this point? What if I didn't have transportation? That's going to be a huge issue. If it's not addressed, like, hey, this is when we're starting school. This is the process. I, I understand, you know, slowly integrating. I agree with that a hundred percent. But the process of it all needs to be answered and a final answer needs to be addressed to the community like yesterday. I, I, I mean, I, I don't know. I came on here, I've been sitting on here for almost four hours, just like everybody else, to get that answer today. And not one single person has clarified that in this entire thing. You know, all the things we're addressing, yes, are important, but not as important as to what parents are going to be doing to get their kids to school and that, that final answer.
One thing I'll add to all that is, um, you know, and I'm hearing it loud and clear. Mr. Murray said it, number of parents said it. So I think, you know, priority number one would get what we've talked about tonight into a, a document that clearly lays out specifics, grade levels, dates, start mapping it out very, very specifically so that parents have a document that they can reference. You know, with all the questions and all the comments and conversation, I think something gets lost in translation. Plus, we're all sitting, like you said, for a number of hours staring on his, on a Zoom meeting and it's hard to keep track of all of it. So I think, I think it's a fair assessment and I think a good response would be a document that really lays it out for you folks so that you can clearly digest it. And then if you have questions after that, then you can always follow up with those as well.
Well, I, I thought I agree with you a hundred percent and maybe even further, a community board at the community center or something where if there's other avenues like Camp Westwood accessible to people, you know, uh, other resources in our community, trying to step forward. If, if those are options or things, you know, um, some extra extended daycare systems where, that are in town, that are willing to help people or even a transporting system, if those are things we have to also look at, you know, make them accessible and get answers out to people because like Mr. Murray had said, you know, um, not everybody, I, I mean, can be as diligent and have the three-step plan. I agree with, with Mr. Murray saying. I, I've changed my plan eighteen times already. But at this point today, I thought I would have the final answer, which I knew wasn't going to be a hundred percent guaranteed for the rest of the school year. But at least something to say, okay, this is what I can do with my family financially, educationally, um, and know my child's in a safe environment and will take day one, September fourteenth, as what it is. It's not going to be perfect. And I hope other parents listening to this understand that. And it's a trial by error, absolutely. No one is a guinea pig, but it's all new to all of us. But coming up with an answer and Don, I think a website, as much information we can get out there would be best for the community.
Shay, we, um, we have our district site and there's a re-entry link that everything that gets put out to the community goes onto that website.
Oh, okay.
But I will also say to you that I, I know at the elementary level, each principal has also built out a, a, a small webpage dedicated to just COVID and returning to school. And so when I send out those building-based plans, I'm going to have them linked to their website. And the website is something that they'll update often. So, you know, wherever your kids are going to school, there, there's, there are plans for those schools. But like I said, anything that we put out to the community goes on that website.
Okay. Now, and my last question before the evening, Don, Mr. Levis mentioned about middle school programs going to the high school. Is that like extra activities or electives or is that a start in class program or something?
That we're starting, we have, uh, some special education programs and special populations programs that right now are at the middle school. We're going to relocate them to the high school, starting the first day of school. So those kids will have an in-school experience at the high school. And then, um, and like I, I think I said earlier, they're only taking four or five classrooms. They're not taking, you know, a, a giant piece of, of the high school. The rest of the high school kids will be on distance learning until we can get everything done and get a situation situated to get them back into school, uh, in October, which would start with the hybrid.
Okay. And, um, Mr. Levis, if I had a question about volunteering, um, I do work in the medical field. Can I email you in regards to that?
Sure. Definitely. Most definitely. Thank you, Shay.
Well, I just want to say thank you to you all. I hope your evening ends well, uh, well shortly, excuse me, not well. Um, and thank you for your time and appreciate you.
Thank you, Shay.
Take care.
Okay, next up is Tracy. Tracy, if you could state your name and address for the record and unmute your microphone.
Hi, Tracy, please. I am at Ten Birdie Court. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, Tracy.
So a lot of my questions have already been answered, so I'll be brief. I don't even really feel like it will make a difference. But I, Mr. Levis, I've always been a huge supporter of you. I think you're great with the community. I think you have always made great decisions. But I think you are really, really failing the children and failing the families right now. I do. I think there are better options here focusing on the air quality, which I do think is amazing. I think you should be focusing on that. But I mean, my daughter's in the middle school. There is plenty of outdoor space there. She does not do well with distance learning. And honestly, we won't participate in distance learning. I'll look into other options because that's not going to work for us.
So Tracy, um, hey, first I, I appreciate your comments. Um, and, you know, I, one thing I learned a long time ago is people feel the way they feel. And so, but I just want to be clear that, you know, we're not saying we're doing distance learning for the year. We're not going out and saying we're going to do, this is our plan today and we're not going, we're going to revisit it in January, December. We have a goal to bring all of our students back in as soon as possible. And I know the frustration, you know, you, you know, I can't debate the fact that it's taken this long. I can tell you why we've been discussing this at lengths, um, you know, since we submitted our, our re-entry plans originally. And I think it was July sixteenth, we submitted ours. So I'm not, you know, the bottom line though is that we are not saying that, you know, we're not going to revisit this. But we are saying that we need some guidance. We have somebody that's given us guidance. And, and our commitment is to do whatever we can do, not to look for reasons why we can't, you know, open schools, but to find those ways that we can open them and bring our students in as soon as possible. You know, again, if I'm forced to make a decision.
But I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt you.
No, I was just saying is, you know, we could have easily just made a recommendation before that we don't have the money. Even if recommendations come up, you know, we're not ready to make a decision and said distance learning. We, I understand that. I mean, I'll accept whatever frustration or whatever angst or whatever anger is directed at me, what, fully. But I want you to know that we're taking our time. We took our time because we want to be able to see light at the end of the tunnel. We want to bring our students back in. So we could have easily.
Feel that you could utilize all the outdoor space in the meantime while you're figuring all that out?
No, not for six hundred students as a plan. I think that's great. You know, I, I, I think that we've looked at bringing tents in, but not to replace the indoors completely. I mean, you know, this is new.
But a lot of the classrooms do have windows.
So, so again, I'm not going to, you know, again, I, I don't want to repeat myself. I get that, you know, five weeks ago, we thought it was just opening windows. Right? We've always had concerns about middle school. Please attend our building committee meeting, school building committee, the next one we have, the public meetings. You'll understand how concerned we are about the middle school. But again, the air quality is nothing to do with just typical air quality. We have studies, I have a twenty-page study on the middle school. Do we have issues there? Yes.
I do understand that.
But if it was unsafe, we wouldn't have people in it. This is about the virus and, and airborne transmission. And, I want to make sure that when we bring people in, I've heard several times, guinea pigs, guinea pigs. Our students, our staff are not guinea pigs. And, and I've heard several times, people will get sick, students will get sick, staff will get sick. You know, do I want that to happen? No.
Part of the frustration is coming from. I mean, I can't speak for everybody. People have said guinea pigs. I don't feel that way. Um, so you said twenty-five percent of the community has already opted for distance learning.
Correct.
And then everybody else wants their kids back in school. Like, I know it's your job to do it safely. It's your job to worry about us. But you have the whole community telling you that we want and need our kids back in school.
So.
And I don't feel like you're exploring all the options.
Yeah. Well, I mean, people, like I said, we've been having these public meetings for a long time. And, uh, you know.
I trusted you to do the right thing, to be honest, and you haven't.
What?
I didn't hear that.
I said I trusted him to do the right thing and he hasn't.
Yeah, I'm, again, I'm not going to debate that. I mean.
The thing to understand about this too, this is not an easy decision, but I want my kids in school too, right? I have two kids. My wife and I both work. You know, Don has kids. We all want kids to be there, but just to put them in school. And then what happens if a week goes by and there's a major outbreak? We're right back where we started because we're foolish to go in without vetting how we went in. So we hear you, we hear all of the parents that say, we want our kids in there. We all want our parents, uh, all, all want our kids in there. You know, we wouldn't, we wouldn't be discussing it and trying to figure it out if we didn't. As, as Mr. Levis said, we just turn the screws and, and say, you know what? We're on distance learning. That's it. I think if we can litmus test it through a, a, you know, an early age model and we can incrementally improve that model, one, it vets it out. Two, if we have an outbreak, we can address it quickly. And we're not dealing with forty-six hundred students. We're the sixth largest school district in the state. So if we have a major outbreak, it's a real problem. We could be in a long-term state of execution here. We could be as parents, you know, basically sealing our own fate by trying to rush into this. And, you know, so I, I understand where you're coming from. You're absolutely right to feel the way you do. We all feel that way. This is not a, an easy, you know, thing to, to deal with, but, you know, I, I, I think we're trying to, to take the data we're giving, given and, and make the best decision we can. And that's not to throw cover for anybody in the administration. It's just a fact. We're all dealing with this. School committee members, administration, community members. We're all frustrated. So I don't want you to feel like we're failing you as a, as a community. I'm hoping you'll just, you know, you work with us as we move forward. And, and, you know, the hope is, I've told, I've told people from day one. I said it in the session that I had last week. Day one is not going to look like day ten, twenty, thirty, forty, right up until day one eight. So just because we're starting one way does not mean that we're not committed to going full in person. Maybe some people aren't, but I know myself, and from what I've heard, we're all committed to ramping up as quickly as possible. So just keep that in mind. I know it's frustrating, but you know, these are the tough decisions we have to make, you know, with the unfortunate, what we have in front of us. So. I'll leave it at that. know, with the unfortunate, what we have in front of us, so, I'll leave it at that.
That's it, you can go to the next person.
Okay, the next person is Marie B. You just state your name and address for the record, and I'll mute your microphone.
Oh, I apologize, I did not mean to raise my hand.
Okay. Okay, the next person is Erin. And if you could state your name and address for the record, and I'll mute your microphone. Erin, if you could unmute your microphone. All right, I think that's the last one.
Okay, thank you so much, Mr. Murphy. All right, we have a motion, we have a second, we have a roll call, vote please.
Kathy Patnord?
Yes.
Dave Florio?
Yes.
Luke Murray?
Yes.
Donna Colonian?
Yes.
James Pearson?
Yes.
Can carry five to zero, thank you, and thank you to the attendees and all of the questions, you take your, we don't take this lightly, we understand your frustration, and we appreciate you hanging in here as we reach the 11 o'clock hour. Okay, moving on to 14, which is the FY21 temporary month-to-month budget discussion and votes, it was our references, number nine A and B. Mr. Levis, did you wanna start this, and then roll here for Sarah?
No, I think I'm gonna turn it over to Sarah to begin, I mean, I think this is something we've presented before, discussed, you know, Mr. Pearson was absolutely right when he brought forward that we need to have a budget by law, and that's what we're presenting tonight, I think it's, you know, gonna present it, and again, Ms. Mangiarelli will correct me if I'm wrong, but it's, we're presenting this as a budget right now, and our goal is to come back, if possible, when we have a town budget or other variables, and come back, and we may adjust this, but having said that, I'll turn it over to Ms. Mangiarelli. And I don't know if there's documents you wanna, want Mr. Murphy to pull up, Ms. Mangiarelli?
Yeah, Jim, if you can pull up the budget reference, that's fine, so this document should look pretty similar, this is our pre-COVID operating budget, we did address, we'll use the federal funds at the previous school committee meeting, so because, as we are operating without a town budget still, which means we are operating at the FY20 level, we had to reduce expenditures by 1.8 million to bring down the local appropriations, so we had been presenting, I think, three meetings in a row, our proposed cuts to start the year off, those included extracurriculars, some SRP staffing positions, one-to-one technology purchases, so that list has remained consistent, this budget should remain, if passed, until a time in which a new town budget is presented, and/or until which time a new state budget is presented, because we are still operating without a state budget, so we are still operating at 91% of our state aid as well. So some of these cuts are not cuts that any of us want to make, I think that we have been consistent all along, pre-COVID, and during COVID, of presenting a budget that we needed for normal operations, as well as the budget that was needed to handle our COVID response, so at this time, it really is just approving a temporary month-to-month budget, based on a level of funding of town appropriations, until we have more information so we can slowly move forward. You heard an educator call in, saying that we had issued a budget freeze, so as we had discussed at the previous meeting, we've been moving forward with purchases that would be applied regardless of the learning environment, and we have been moving forward on some of our PP&amp;E purchases relatively recently, especially since the $747,000, which is our share of the state's 50 million, that application was just released to us last Wednesday, and actually, I did just notice, while we were on the meeting, that our application for the previous federal funds, which was given to us in the spring, was just approved today, so we can at least start moving forward with some of the federal funds, but this is really for our normal operations, to ensure that we're operating with at least a temporary budget for now. Obviously, in light of the discussion that's taken place, we will need to circle back, this is somewhat of a new plan that we just discussed, and you just approved, with the goal of full in-person return, I don't think that the budgets that I have presented are going to change significantly, if anything, because we will have somewhat of a delay of a full in-person return, and the next month, I can calculate what I think the one-month savings would be from September to October, by not having everybody in a full in-person, but with the intent that we're gonna return it full in-person, this is the budget that we presented, and I would stand behind the budget as we have it. So if there are questions, comments?
Thank you so much. Thank you, Sarah, I guess, with Mr. Pearson, do you have any questions this hour? I'll comment.
Not at this time.
Okay, Ms. Colonian? No, no questions at this time, thanks, Sarah. Mr. Murray? You're muted, Mr. Murray.
I said it would happen one or two times, this is my second, can we bring up the second, the cuts, the 1.8 million? Yeah, there we go, perfect, the only thing, I just, you know, again, one, I'm asking to put this up for those who are tuned in to look at, because this is what we're looking at cutting, to make up that 1.8 million, I think that's important for people, to reiterate to people who are still watching, the other thing I wanted to mention is the EBates program, again, because I know that that was a 50% match grant, and I've been harping on that issue, but I think it's important, because it relates to technology, which if we're gonna continue on with distance learning, which it looks like for the foreseeable future, no matter what, we're gonna have to do, I just wanted to make sure that, I express my support of this line item, and prioritizing it back into the budget, because I understand it needs to be cut to balance the budget tonight, but one of the first things I'd like to see back in is this, because I know that I don't wanna lose opportunities on that grant, and I know it's going towards a valid effort, and it's something that's pertinent to now, so that's my only thing I wanted to bring up, and I'll leave it at that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Murray, and finally, Mr. Florio?
No questions, Madam Chair, I just think it stinks that we have to do this, I think it's terrible, but we'll do it.
All right, any other questions, are we ready to move on this item? Murray, are you ready to make a motion?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve the temporary budget for fiscal year 2020/2021 as presented, until a revised, limited in-person budget is presented for consideration, and/or until a budget is presented and adopted by the Town Council of Coventry.
I second the motion. Thank you. Before I call for the vote, are there any questions or comments from the attendees gathered? I don't see any hands raised, Mr. Murphy.
Nope, there are no hands.
All right, thank you, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Kathy Patnord?
Yes.
Dave Florio?
Yes.
Luke Murray?
Yes.
Donna Colonian?
Yes.
James Pearson?
Reluctantly, yes.
Thank you all, motion carries five to zero, moving on to item number 15, the superintendent's report, Mr. Levis, do you have anything to report?
Yeah, no, you know what, in fact, we incorporated this, Mr. Coward, Ms. Mangiarelli's laughing, I'm sure it's not directed at me, Ms. Mangiarelli, though, I incorporated that into when we discussed the contingencies of what we're doing ongoing, you know, when I did the reentry plan or phase, so I have nothing to add to that.
Great, anything for the superintendent before we go to citizens' comments? Seeing none, are there any citizens' comments, our agenda item number 16? Doesn't look like I see any hands raised, Mr. Murphy, is that in fact...
No hands raised.
All right, then we can move to 17, which is the scheduling of the next meeting, is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I make a motion that the next virtual meeting of the Coventry School Committee be scheduled for Thursday, September 10th, 2020, at 6:00 PM.
I second the motion. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Kathy Patnord?
Yes.
Dave Florio?
Yes.
Luke Murray?
Yes.
Donna Colonian?
Yes.
James Pearson?
Yes.
The motion carries five to zero, and the motion to adjourn, I have 11:07.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that the meeting be adjourned at 11:07 PM.
I second that motion. All in favor, I'm just gonna have a yell vote. Hi. Hi, thank you all for attending, I'm very much appreciated, all the answers, questions raised, and all the participation.
See you soon, Madam Chair.
Goodbye, everyone.
Good night, Donna.
Night.
Good night, Donna.